Start. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Gore and I'm Chair of ANC 34G. Thank you for coming out to tonight's meeting. I want to welcome you all for coming tonight and participating in my meet, in our meeting. I'm glad you all are here and spending some time with the ANC. As your Chair, I'm going to work to create a meeting where every Commissioner and member of the community is respected, heard, valued, and seen. With that, we have a lot on our agenda, so we're going to get started. I call the meeting to order at 6:34 PM. Commissioners, once recognized, please introduce yourself to the attendees, and I am going to go from my left to right, starting with Commissioner Finacy.
Good evening. My name is Laura Finacy, and I am Commissioner for Single Member District 04. That's between Broad Branch and Utah and includes Lafayette Elementary School and the Park. Thank you.
And good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Gore, and I'm the Commissioner for ANC 34G01, which is all of Hawthorne and portions of Barnaby Woods. Thank you. Commissioner Grunwald.
Yes, I'm Carol Grunwald. Good evening, Commissioner for SMD 03. And the boundaries of my SMD are Utah Avenue to the Northeast, 27th Street to the East, Broad Branch to the South and the West, McKinley on the North, and it jogs north and east along Nebraska where rejoins Utah Avenue.
Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Bruce Sherman, District 02, and the boundaries for my district are Military on the South by St. John's College High School, Oregon running along Rock Creek Park up to Tennyson over to Utah, and my district extends north of Tennyson along Oregon to Chatsworth, Unicorn Lane, and the Oregon Knolls communities.
Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, hi, I'm Peter Goslin. I represent District 6, which is largely the west side of Connecticut, back to Friendship Heights. Welcome.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, Commissioner Simmons. I have the east side of Connecticut from the Gaishen down to Western Avenue, all the way back to Broad Branch, which borders Wards 3 and 4, and I have the Community Center and Library.
Commissioner Nagy?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Nagy. I'm Commissioner for SMD 07, which runs from Military South to Chevy Chase Parkway, West to Reno Road, and East to Nevada. Welcome to our meeting.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Regarding announcement of meeting procedures, ANC's meeting procedures as provided for in our agenda, so if you have our agenda, I believe they start on page three or page two, established by our bylaws and outlined in Robert's Rules of Order help us efficiently conduct the Commission's business. And per those procedures, and I'm going to try to put these meeting procedures into chat, all attendees must stay muted unless recognized to speak and must be recognized by the Chair before making comments. Meetings follow the agenda and listed times. The Chair may modify as needed. Typical meeting length is an hour and forty-five minutes. In keeping with the reasonable citizen time commitment and community center schedule, we are virtual, so this may change as needed. Commissioner introductions and community agency announcements, one minute each. Speakers must stay within allotted time. Email, written comments are also accepted by the Commission. During agenda items, residents speak first, followed by Commissioner briefs. Commissioner briefs, three minutes with an optional two-minute follow-up. Resident briefs that are scheduled, three minutes with an optional two-minute follow-up, and each resident is heard once before anyone speaks twice. Ad-hoc resident comments on agenda items and during the fifteen-minute open session will have one minute with an optional one-minute follow-up. In terms of adoption of the agenda, Commissioners, I'm assuming everyone has a copy of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I've got two. One is to note that the PEPCO issue that the Office of the People's Council was going to brief on, their recent rate hikes, we're going to have to reschedule that again. We've had devilishly difficult times synchronizing our schedules with the schedules of folks from that office, so there will not be an Office of the People's Council representative tonight, so we can move that off the agenda. And then I would like to request five minutes at the end of the meeting during Commissioner comment period, if I could.
So, we have Commissioner comment, so you want five minutes? Or you're asking for extended time during that period?
Well, typically, we have what, a minute, or two, or three, or something like that, towards the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, just another few minutes. Might not even be five.
That's fine. Any other changes to the agenda, Commissioner? Okay, hearing none, I move that we adopt the Commission's agenda as amended, which would include the deletion of the PEPCO rate hike discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Commissioners, say aye. Aye, raise your hand. Okay, seven zero. Thank you. Commissioner Nagy, the minutes?
Yeah, thank you. Lower my hand here. Um, yes, recognizing that there will be some discussion, I move that we adopt the minutes from October 6th meeting with, I believe, to make technical corrections. And to that point, I will say that I will make a technical correction.
Commissioner Nagy, hang on, point of order. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Goslin, second it. Okay, discussion. Commissioner Nagy?
And that was suggested by Corinthea, and that is the Run Con actually did say the Civic Core, and I will change that in the minutes. And I've also already said that I will make technical corrections to make the paragraph numbers and who voted how conformed to the rest of the circulated draft minutes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, yes, I just wanted to know, in the minutes, I had raised a concern about a Commissioner's spouse working on a website, so I wanted the minutes to reflect that concern versus what was noted.
With respect, I disagree about putting that in the minutes. The minutes are not meant to be a transcript. They're meant to be a record of decisions that were taken, and there was no decision taken on that point at the meeting, and I would not include it for that reason. However, I see your hands up, Corinthea. However, if you want to start using this as a transcript, I have some changes of my own that I would suggest. I'll leave them to the side for the moment.
Commissioner Simmons?
Oh, Chair Gore, I just want to note that we're consistent on what we're putting in. So, we listed a concern about the meeting minutes, but we're not going to list the other concerns, so I would just like the main, if we're not going to list all my concerns, then just remove any.
I'm sorry, I don't follow.
She was addressing to that me, Commissioner Nagy.
I still don't follow, and I have to do the minutes for this meeting, Commissioner Gore.
What she said, Commissioner Nagy, is that one concern she was asking, or concerns that, she's basically saying that she wants the concerns to be consistent, or whatever what we put in the minutes are consistent. And there are, I'm assuming there were several concerns that were mentioned. Commissioner Simmons, let me go back to you. Can you clarify what is not consistently in the minutes that you're asking for it to be?
Yeah, so she mentions in the minutes that I was concerned about meeting minutes not being on the website, and I was asking for my additional concern to be added about the Commission not being aware of spouses working on the website. So if we're not going to include the second one, don't include the first one. So it seems inconsistent to say that you don't want to put my whole concern in, but you put one.
Okay. Um, so I have a, Commissioner Nagy, you have a question. Were the, were you agreeing to include the technical correction for the vote count? I know there was one.
Yes, yes, I was.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Commissioners, on minutes, on discussion? Okay. Commissioners, all those in favor for adopting the minutes with technical corrections, please raise your hand. Commissioner Grunwald, I can't see your hand. Got it. Commissioner Simmons, what's your vote?
I'm staying for right now.
Okay. Vote is six zero one, extension. Commissioner Nagy?
No, sorry, that was still for the vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this portion of the meeting, we are going to allow residents to come before the Commission. If you have any questions, issues that you want to raise, typically, we say those issues are issues that are not on the agenda, but I'm definitely going to allow for, if you want to discuss the issue that is on the agenda. But at this point, if you, this is a fifteen-minute segment for our community members, as well as if there's folks from the Council's office, Mayor's office. If you have an announcement and you're an agency, you're limited to one minute. We'll start out with Cal. Cal?
Hi there, I'm just giving a quick update from the Friends of Bus Transit, and I put this information in the chat. We had, except for the first thing I'm going to say, we had a successful transit training in partnership with Go DC Go, which is a D dot initiative on Saturday at the library and an excursion on a bus to the, to the, to the Friendship Heights Metro. We also, the feedback forum that we've been talking about for giving us feedback on the bus network is running now through the end of October. It was supposed to end on the 25th, but we've extended it. The URL for that is in the chat, and there, the next two calls for getting on and open forum we have, it's an hour-long open forum, where anybody can just hop on and talk about buses in any way they want to. The next one is going to be this Wednesday from 7:30 to 8:30, and the following Thursday, November the 6th, from 3:30 to 4:30. And as always, we have our resources page, which is our Wiki, that includes a list of all the bus stops in the neighborhood listed by street.
Cal, please wrap up.
This is the last thing. By street and the school bus times, as well as the next times for the Ask For Bus calls. So that's my report.
Thank you. Kendall Gibson?
Hi, everybody. I'm Kendall Gibson. I'm the Ward 3 manager in the Mayor's Office of Community Relations and Services. One minute, I'm going to talk fast. It's leaf season. Rake your leaves by November 2nd, because I believe that y'all's section of 34G is in the first pickup round. So please, please, please rake your leaves by November 2nd, and you can be in touch with me if your leaves are not picked up according to the schedule. You can check dpw.dc.gov/leaf, which I will put all of this in the chat. Also, snow season is coming. This is like Moker Supercharge time. Leaf, then snow, then ice. So please sign up to be a snow team hero. Ward 3 has the least amount of volunteers to shovel snow for our seniors and people with disabilities. So let's try to change that around this year. I have a couple wards that I would like to beat, and I need your help in order to do so. I will send a link in the chat, so you can sign up to be a snow team hero. Finally, a little public safety announcement for everybody. I'm sure you've noticed that we've had some issues with youth communing in large groups in places like U Street and the Wharf, Navy Yard. It is getting a little dangerous. So we're trying to work with the Council to extend the youth curfew. This applies to youth that are seventeen and younger, and it would last until December 31st, so New Year's Eve. The standard curfew for youth is 11:00 PM. This would make the curfew for youth in specific areas, so like U Street and the Wharf, 7:00 PM, where they need to be with an adult by 7:00 PM. If they are out, their parents will be called. They won't be booked and like brought to the police station. Worst-case scenario, they go to the Department of Youth Rehabilitation Services so that they can be reunited with their parents. If you support the legislation, please consider testifying at the DC Council hearing on Thursday, October 30th, 2025, and please sign up by noon tomorrow. If you have any questions for me regarding any of those things, I'll be sure to put all the information that I just talked about in the chat. What's my time?
A little over a minute, but, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Brian?
Chair Gore, I just wanted to point out to the ANC that the DC Zoning Commission has changed what originally was proposed as one hearing on twenty-four amendments to DC zoning law into six hearings that will take place at new dates. And if you have not yet seen that, notice, there's one out on the listserv from Shelley Rep, and I know there's one member of the Committee on 100 that is on our call tonight. But public testimony is invited, and their announcement about the shift of that one hearing for twenty-four changes to the zoning law to six public hearings on the amendment spread from this Thursday, October 30th to November 13th allows a great deal more opportunity to sign up to testify and have a say on those changes to zoning law. So just as a final. And I'll put the link in the chat for anyone that hasn't seen it.
Great, thank you. Any other community members? This is for community members. Commissioners, we have an announcement section for Commissioners. This is community members.
If we have a question, though, about an announcement, do we do it now, or do we wait?
Yes. So let me go. Commissioner Grunwald, do you have a question about an announcement?
Yeah, well, I don't know if it's a question, but it's, it's with regard to what Kendall was talking about, about leaf collection. Last year, Bruce and the rest of the Commission did a fantastic survey of all our residents, asking them about how adequate the leaf and snow collection was, and it was disastrous. And, and I remember clearly, last year, people complained that the first pickups were way too early, and I was shocked when I received this on my, in my email, that the first collection starts on Monday, November 3. There aren't any leaves on the ground. So it's crazy. So it sounds like we're setting ourselves up for another repeat of last year, which was people really complained about the leaf collection and the snow collection. So I just, since Kendall's on the call, I wanted to know from Kendall if, if this was discussed at all. We gave, we gave the department so, the agency so much detailed information last year, comments from residents and so on.
Um, I am sorry to hear that. I am not aware of any discussions personally, but I think that's just because it's above my pay grade. I'm sure that there was a strategy in place. I'm just not aware of specifics, unfortunately.
Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, I was going to mention that, just to follow up, I won't repeat what Commissioner Grunwald just said. Kendall, I will send you the survey results from last year. Actually, as it happens, the responses from the residents concerning leaf collection were negative. The responses concerning snow removal were generally positive. On the snow removal issue, two quick things. I have signed up, whether I'm a hero or not is another issue, not that, but I have signed up to help, and the city has given me, loaned me, and they've checked in with me on this in the last week, a snow blower that I used for many residents in my neighborhood who can't shovel their walks, elderly residents. So I'm in that program. The city's been very, very good on that, so I appreciate it. The other thing I want to mention to you is that I just put out a notice in my most recent newsletter that just went out a little bit ago, reminding people about the snow shoveling exemption for seniors and those with disabilities. The only issue with that is that the form online is confusing. I believe, based on experience from last year, that folks have until the end of this month to sign up for the upcoming winter season, but it doesn't say that on the form. So if you wouldn't mind taking a look at that, or having somebody at DPW take a look at that, and if the season to register is extended past this Friday, October 31st, then I'll let everybody know that. Otherwise, I'm telling them to hurry up and put their application in. So just wanted to let you know about that.
Right, I would, I would put your application in. It's just better safe than sorry to be in the system.
Well, no, I've, I've told everybody to do that. My, my point is, it would be helpful to have on that website when the window closes for the applications.
Okay, I understand. I'll, I'll flag that up to my team.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, you have your hand rates again?
Sorry, that was unintentional, Lisa.
Okay. Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Nagy, you went on mute.
Yeah, I know. I did that by accident. Sorry about that. Thanks for flagging that. I just wanted to mention, perhaps for Kendall's benefit as much as anyone else's, that I attended a Zoom on leaf collection a few weeks ago, and they discussed the fact that leaf collection happened too soon last year. So they do know about it. So you might want to touch base with Randy Thorpe, I believe, was, who was running that session, and discuss with her the timing of leaf collection.
Sure, I will. I mean, as, as someone who, who drives and walks around Ward 3 most days, I will say that leaves are falling, and people have raked and bagged two, three, four bags of leaves. So I, I'm, I'm struggling to understand the comments about there being not that many leaves, but I understand that it's frustrating to have to go first and then wait around for the second pass around, but I, I hope to be a strong partner with you guys this leaf season, and if you, if, when we're in full swing, just feel free to reach out to me if you see leaf bags that are sitting around, or with any other feedback. I'm, I'm happy to get it done. As you guys know, I'm, I'm very responsive.
It's true. Thank you so much, Kendall.
Community members, any more updates, comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to the next item of the agenda, which is an informational update from NPD, Lieutenant Olivier. Lieutenant Olivier, I see that you're on. If you can bless us with turning on your camera, thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
PSA 201, Lieutenant, yeah. So I'll just jump right into it. As far as 201 theft of models, that's our biggest, in our 201 right now. The theft of models is trending down monthly. However, it's still very high for the, yet to date, but it's a good sign that it's trending down monthly, especially coming into the holiday season. So just a quick reminder to everyone, keep your packages out of your vehicle. Don't, don't have anything in your vehicle, so these guys can take it. When it comes to the, the suspects, we know who they are. However, the, the Attorney's Office always say we don't have enough to prosecute, because either the video is not great or other reasons that they declined. However, they got them on, on, on other things, but they're still out there. Okay, it's not just one group now, it's multiple groups. The other thing, as far as the 5901 Utah, the Barrett Field or Maritfield? We have video of, of that, that happening. That happened on October 3rd, around 10 o'clock at night, and we have videos of it. Detectives are still investigating it. So that's where we are with that. There was another concern in the thing. When it comes to immigration and ICE, we have nothing really to do with them, but to help them to transport. They can, they monitor our, our radio frequency, and they just show up on the scene and do whatever they have to do. So we have no control over that. We don't know what their operations are, when they're coming, or none of that stuff, when it comes to immigration enforcement. And I believe that was it so far, so I'm open for questions if anybody have any.
Commissioner Goslin?
Lieutenant, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm concerned about the fact that ICE is monitoring your radio frequencies. Can you give me any rough estimate, give us any rough estimate of the percentage of time that they show up at scenes that you have officers at? So some, give us some sense of how they're using the information that they get from monitoring your, your radio signals.
Well, I really can't give you the percentage, because I don't know it. I don't believe it's being tracked, at least not from this office. However, when they show up on the scene, they're, they're entitled to the information of the person that we have stopped. They wait generally until we're, we're finished with them. MPD's completely finished with the person, and then they, they go ahead and do whatever they want to do.
Well, could you, could you, could you say whether it is rare, or frequent, or give us some qualitative?
Not as frequent, I'm not hearing it as frequent as it is, but I, I know it's happening. I'm hearing some of it, but it's not as, as frequent that.
Let me go to Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, Lieutenant, thank you for your report. Just to follow up Commissioner Goslin's point, on, there have been two ICE raids, arrests in my single-member district that took place in August. Fortunately, there have not been any since then, although remain very concerned about the potential for them. But in the instance of the, uh, arrest on, on Military, Military 27th, on the 20th of August, MPD was there. The sequence of events, I don't know, but MPD was there. The park police stopped the vehicle first, then ICE turned up, and then MPD came. So these events witnessed by a number of people also add to concerns that folks have about MPD's involvement. We have spoken, I believe you and Captain Haskis and I, about this before, and I respect your views about MPD's role, and I won't, again, I won't put you on the spot here further. I would only say this, that I forwarded to you and Captain Haskis, the report that I received on Friday, this past Friday, October 24th, about shots fired that were heard on October 23rd, Thursday, near the Rock Creek Community Garden, in the area that's adjacent to the garden, the horse stables that have been cordoned off and closed off by order of the National Park Service, the Rock Creek Park Superintendent, Brian Joyner. And that is an area where law enforcement is operating, federal law enforcement. Presumably, this is a staging ground for ICE to patrol, to surveil the neighborhood, the area, and if they so choose, of course, stop vehicles and make arrests. But that matter of the gunshots is a particular concern. This is next to my single-member district. Various of my constituents have raised the concern, and I've written to Superintendent Joyner to ask for a response. This is not your territory, I understand, it's federal, but again, just to let you know, it's a concern to the neighborhood.
Okay, that was last week, Thursday, I believe?
Thursday, October 23rd, yeah.
The only sounds of gunshots I heard from Thursday, is there cemetery near that area?
No, this is the horse stables in Rock Creek Park where.
Different area, but, yeah, only sounds of gunshots we received was for a funeral, happening, I believe, off of Rock Creek over here.
Okay. Well, my forwarding to you, my correspondence with Superintendent Joyner constitutes, if you will, a report in that I have it on good authority, that constituents heard gunshots on Thursday, four different gunshots. Now, the truth of all that, I don't know. I can't understand what happened, and so I've asked Superintendent Joyner for a report, but I just wanted to hear publicly on this meeting while you're with us, make you, again, aware of that, because it adds to the concern, of course, that people have about the involvement, the role of federal law enforcement in our neighborhood.
Okay. I'll definitely look into that. I'll definitely look into that. Um, however, when it comes to ICE and federal law enforcement, in the incident you're talking about, the, the traffic crash, uh, park police showed up first.
It was a stop of, 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 of a landscaping crew, one of whom was undocumented and he was detained on the scene.
Okay, MPD will show up and they will do the city's work. We're not doing the federal work. We only take care of what, what the city, the laws that the city have. We're definitely not doing the federal. We're not making the stops for them. We're not doing any of that. Um, I believe there was a, uh, you guys also emailed me about a, an accident where ICE and them showed up on the scene as well, concerning a bicycle or pedestrian.
Um, I, I don't recall that.
Don't recall that.
Personally, somebody might have, yes.
So, again, we, we, we took care of that accident incident that day and that was it. We are not doing anything for the federal, uh, partners. However, if they do need us to transport, we can, we, we allow to transport, but we're not doing any federal work.
Okay, thank you. Let me move to Commissioner Grunwald.
Uh, yes, good evening, Lieutenant Olivier. Thank you for coming to our meeting. Um, I, I had contacted you, uh, a, a, a while back, uh, reporting that there was, um, ICE activity in my SMD on October 15th at the corner of Military and 29th Street, uh, during the rush hour. And you, uh, you wrote me back and, and basically said what you've been saying tonight, that, um, MPD doesn't make the stops. But I'm just very curious, um, if the federal police agencies are monitoring, um, Metropolitan Police, uh, communications, are they, are they selecting certain communications to respond to? And I think Peter also asked, uh, this may be the same question. He asked, how, how often is this occurring? I mean, do they, do the federal, um, officers come to every, every stop that MPD makes? How do they, how do they pick and choose? Um, are they responding to your reading off, let's say, um, um, uh, a license, uh, belong, you know, that belongs to the name of a, a person who's, who's Latino? And they recognize that that's a Hispanic name? Are they responding to that? How, how are they picking and choosing to respond to MPD, um, stops?
My understanding is that they have people they're looking for. That's my understanding of it. Um, uh, again, I worked the evening tour, which is probably the busiest tour, uh, of the, of the three shifts. And I rarely hear where, um, I saw any federal agency, uh, pulling up on the scene. I don't hear the officers talking about it or any of that. That's what.
It's my, it's my understanding that, uh, from my neighbors who, who travel to Silver Spring and they also traveled to 16th Street early in the morning during the rush hour, that that's when the federal agents come out during the rush hour and they pick off landscape, uh, workers and roofing contractors.
Right, so that, I can speak to what their operational stuff is. I, we, I, the only time I've heard of that is you guys talking about it, but I haven't seen it, I haven't heard of it outside of the, uh, commission talking about it. Uh, I'm not saying that it's, it's wrong. I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I understand what you're saying. It's just, it's just such a matter of concern for my, my, my neighbors. They are very, very concerned about this. It happened twice now in, in my immediate neighborhood.
As far as the federal agencies monitoring our radio, um, that's been happening for years. Okay, so you have, you have Secret Service, US Park Police. We all share the ra- the radio band. So we've been doing this for years, especially after 9/11, okay, for, for, for communications. They're just using it now.
Okay.
To enhance their job.
I understand, I understand. But how do they know, how do they know that the people you were stopping are Latino?
Well.
That they would be interested in that.
They have a list of people they're looking for in the area. That is my understanding of it. I'm not saying I am correct. I'm just saying, my understanding of what they're doing is they have a list of people that they're looking for. So you might have that accident where that person might have been involved or they show up, it's not that person they leave, or they may not even show up at all because it's not that person they're looking for. So this is probably why it's not as frequent, frequently happening. But my understanding is that they have a list of people that they're actually looking for.
So do they only stop, they only work from a list? They don't stop people willy-nilly?
I do not know.
Who have Hispanic names or look Hispanic?
Commissioner Grunwald, um, let me move to Commissioner. We got two more commissioners with their hands raised and two minutes left in this discussion. Commissioner Goslin?
Very quickly, Lieutenant, you know, I very much appreciate your work and your appearance here, but I've got to ask on behalf of some of my constituents, uh, be- beyond, um, monitoring radio, ICE agents are not at shift change briefings. Is that correct?
No, they're not.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sherman? You're on mute, Commissioner Sherman.
Apologies. Lieutenant, this is not your business, but I just need to know for the record since we're talking about this. What ICE is doing is racial profiling, plain and simple. They stopped, um, the truck, uh, on October 20th on Military simply because they looked Latino. Um, and that's what's happening in the neighborhood and that's what people are concerned about. Um, uh, among many other things, obviously, um, but just to, just to mention, they're not in any way, shape or form that I could tell in the two arrests that happened in my neighborhood working off of a list. But just, just to note that. I know it's not your issue, but just to note it. Thanks.
Okay, um, I understand that. Um, I do not know all the operational techniques that they're using. I, I just know that they're supposed to be, well, they, my understanding is that they're working off of a list. I don't know how they, they're ma- making that list. None of that. That's just my understanding. I understand what you're saying. And in terms of, uh, the neighborhoods and, you know, the, the people in the neighborhoods, um, but we're not actively participating with ICE stopping people or doing any of that stuff. If we have a traffic accident or we have a call that MPD have to respond to, we're going to handle it the MPD way, the way the city wants us to handle it. The city told us if ICE show up and we're finished, we're done with that. Um, also, we can transport for them and that's about it that we can do. But we're not cooperating as far as, yes, we will cooperate with our partners, but we're, we're not doing the traffic stops for them. None of that stuff. They, every, everything is ICE or the feds.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Um, and while we have you on the line and, uh, we ended right on time. So thank you, uh, to the commissioners as well. I really appreciate that. Great discussion and something the commission might want to follow up in a additional type of format.
Hey, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. The next item on the agenda is another informational update, um, regarding the safety issues concerning 5301 Connecticut Avenue. This agenda item also has a 15-minute discussion time limit. Commissioner Nagy, um, take this away.
Okay, thank you. I, I will try to keep this brief and, uh, Lieutenant Olivera, I definitely appreciate your coming back to be with us this time and apologies for not being ready for you last time. Um, the reason that this is coming up is because I've gotten reports from constituents about a lot of, uh, a lot more police activity around 5301 than is usual, uh, really on, even on the Connecticut Avenue corridor, my little slice, slice of it. So I contacted Lieutenant Olivera and said, so tell me, why are there four police cars, uh, all day in front of 5301 and why were, and another occasion, why were there two police cars and, and so on? Um, and he was kind enough to pull together some statistics and, um, I don't know if you have them handy, Lieutenant Olivera. I, I do and maybe we can run over them.
Yeah, I have them, um, with me. So, um, that, that particular day that you were talking about, unfortunately, was a medical emergency at, at that, that time. Uh, but, yeah, it's a date. I just pulled some new numbers here today. I'm going to go back and forth till, uh, October 6th, but it's a date. We have 63 calls, six, three calls for 5301. Uh, most of them are repeat, repeat calls. Like, we'll have, uh, one of them have like 12 calls for one apartment. Okay, now this is a nine, 19-unit building. We have 12 calls for one apartment. Um, domestics, um, medical emergency, like I said, check on the welfare. A lot of the calls, most of the calls are for, um, disorderly, whether it's disorderly smoking, marijuana in the hallways or wherever they're smoking it, um, noise, disorderly noise, just people hanging around. We have a lot of calls for that. So it's becoming a nuisance, um, building per se. However, the city have, um, the city have different criteria for nuisance buildings. Based on things like, um, how many assaults, arrests, um, shootings and stuff like that, before we could actually classify by the city as a nuisance building and take it to the US Attorney's Office to get it. I have tried to contact the owners off of their, um, email address. Sometimes the email go through or sometimes it bounce back. The phone number is no good at all. I use the number that's posted outside of the building. I've been trying for the past, uh, since we began this quest, uh, 10-6, since October.
I think actually we even began it a little earlier and, and toward the end.
Probably.
There were some back and forth at the end of August.
Right.
Um, about this. Um, if, if you could pass along, uh, the code, the DC code that deals with nuisance buildings, that would be great. I, I do want to mention that I too have been trying to find and contact the owner. I have a couple of leads. It's not actually clear who owns, um, the building. It might be a trust or it might be a single individual. Um, still trying to run that down so that we can get in contact with them and say, hey, you know, what's going on in your building? But I, I think it's noteworthy that, uh, there are this many calls for a building as small as, as this. This is a 19-unit building. It's kind of unbelievable that there's this much going on there. And this is the same building where there was, um, it's related to a stabbing, actually, that occurred last year, I believe. So we're going to keep on top of this. We're going to keep, uh, looking at ways that we can try to, deal with this and abate this so that the community feels secure and the community is in fact more secure about this location. It's just very hard to track down, um, the owners.
Website in the, uh, I guess the chat box, a website for the, uh, OAG's officer that deals with the nuisance, um, nuisance.
Yeah, thank you. Um, say that again. Sorry. I don't see it, I don't see it in the chat. I'm sorry.
Thinking as soon as I'm finished here.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's a comment that, uh.
Commissioner Nagy, um, let me go to Commissioner Finacy. She has her hand raised.
Yeah, mine is sort of a long-term version of, uh, Kendall Gibson's question. She wanted to know how many, 63 calls in how many days? And I was wondering if we have year-to-year data, um, like 2025, 2024, 2023 data from the same, uh, complex or, or same building?
Okay, um, I only pull for year-to-date. This is, um, from January 1st this year till today. It's 60. However, I could go ahead and, um, see if I could pull that for you. Be on, be a minute, move along, or.
Yeah, like maybe for the last five years, because I think, um.
Five years.
Yeah, I think that would be interesting to see the historical data, you know, with this. How recently has this been a problem? Is it a last year problem where they just got one particular new resident? Has it been steadily increasing over the last five years, that kind of thing?
It's, it's not about one resident.
Commissioner Nagy?
Yes, but this is my session, Lisa. So I'd like to finish saying what I want to say.
Hang on, Commissioner Nagy, hang on. Please don't.
Gore, I'd appreciate if you'd let me run my part of the session, please.
Commissioner Nagy?
Yes, ma'am.
Here, I'm going to recognize the speaker so that we stay, uh, in order in that we are, um.
But I would like to address what Commissioner Finacy just said because it's incorrect.
Um, Commissioner Goslin, you had your hand raised.
Well, I may be saying what Liz is going to say. Laura, this building is new and I'm speculating here, but the, the, the for lease sign was outside for a long time. So they've had a clear problem filling the building. And I'm, I, I share, uh, Commissioner Nagy's concern about this. There's 63 calls for a 19-unit building suggests that they packed it any way they could. I, 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 I think this is a, I think this is a real sign of trouble. Uh, and I wonder whether this is related to some of the problems we've seen with the, the, the housing choice voucher.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, um, Commissioner Nagy, I'm sorry I may have missed this. Are all the residents, are they voucher residents, formerly homeless people? Who, who are the residents?
We don't know. And we're, I don't think we're going to know. And that's not the kind of information that we're allowed to ask.
Yeah.
So, but Commissioner Goslin is absolutely correct when he says that the building was empty for a very long time. Um, so there, I doubt that there will be five-year data, Commissioner Finacy, in response to your question, um, which I would have liked to have answered directly earlier. Um, and also, there's a comment in the chat about, um, the property owner possibly being in Georgetown. I'm aware of that, but I'm, it's not actually clear that these are the people who own this building. It's, there's more to this story, I'm afraid. So just try and figure it out.
Any further discussion, commissioners or community members on issues to you?
Well, uh, Lieutenant Olivera was going to try to get some additional data for us, so I think he might want to say something.
Yeah, right now I'm not seeing any. Just give me one second.
Thank you.
Anything additional coming up? I'll have to call, uh, statistics, but it's, it's, it's still showing 69 right now. Um, so I'll call them to get the proper stats.
Thank you very much.
Real quick, um, find everyone out there to please remove all items from their cars. It's holiday time again. Um, if you, if you're expecting packages, the Porsche Pirates are out. If you're expecting packages, see if you could get a neighbor, somebody you trust to pick up your packages for you if you're not at home. Um, and let's just have a safe holiday. It's coming up.
We still have two commissioners with their hands raised. Commissioner Simmons?
Oh, no, I was just gonna ask if, you know, when we talk about disturbances and cause, if we not assume that those cause are related to individuals with vouchers. Thank you.
We have no way of telling that. We don't have that information.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know. I just, what, it was more so in, in reference to everyone, not you in particular. Sorry.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah, so I just wanted to point out that, um, uh, apparently Brian Holloman said that, uh, these are voucher recipients and it, that it came up at a meet, a meetup with Mendelson. So that's what Brian just posted on the chat. Uh, I don't know if Brian cares to discuss this, but he obviously has some information that we don't have about this. Thank you.
I'll, I'll just say briefly, um, at the meetup with, uh, DC Chair, uh, City or District Chair Mendelson, um, it was ANC 3F, uh, folks who were there who knew what was going on at 5301. And the problem is that there are caseworkers that were supposed to be assigned, um, to certain folks as they transitioned. And evidently, there's no way that that caseworker can be assigned in the current, um, funding environment. So there are kind of challenges around, um, helping certain people and it leads to some, uh, problems. They know more about it.
No.
Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, thank you. Um, and, uh, Brian, thank you for the mention of 3F. Um, I actually have been in touch with 3F about this issue, Courtney Carson. Uh, so I'm glad that you flagged that. Again, still not that clear who owns it. And as to the question of wraparound services, the building has been open for longer than we have had a problem with wraparound services. the building has been open for longer than we have had a problem with wraparound services due to the budget and the shutdown and all that. So there's there is just a problem with wraparound services, period. And it's not a recent problem.
Let me go to Kendall Gibson.
Hi, I just want to make clear, I've been working with three F pretty closely on this. They do not have information specifically stating that the people in any building are voucher holders because that is deeply private information. So three F may surmise through research that someone is a voucher holder, but we cannot say with any certainty unless that is disclosed by the person that they are a voucher holder. And I think that that's really important to state. However, I am working with the mayor and other agencies on working on getting these apartment buildings with difficulties, more attention, and I will be adding this building to the list.
Thank you. Commissioner Goslin.
Kendall, that turns out to be the problem. There are ways to provide us and to provide MPD with useful statistical information that does not violate people's privacy. But the council has been has refused to do anything about this. And it makes doing something about this problem, both for the benefit, the safety of our community, but also for the safety of the residents of these buildings, very, very difficult because we're operating blind. And I would encourage you to encourage the mayor to get behind the notion of at least providing MPD and the public with some statistical information about who lives in these buildings. What I mean by that is are fifty percent of the residents voucher holders? In the case of fifty-three oh one, are a hundred percent of the residents voucher holders? We need to know that.
Let me go to Commissioner Nagy, and we have about two minutes in this discussion. Commissioner Nagy.
Well, I mean, to Commissioner Goslin's point, if you say a hundred percent of the people in in the building are voucher holders, that pretty much tells you who is a voucher holder and who isn't. And that, you know, in light of privacy concerns is problematic. I need to either change the dialogue and the laws around what's private or else that kind of statistic is revealing in a way that it probably shouldn't be. Kendall, I would ask, you apparently have been having some discussions about a building on Connecticut Avenue. This building, it sounds like. So I just, please keep me in the loop.
No, I haven't. I haven't been having discussions about that building. I've only been discussing things with Courtney Carlson, buildings that are troublesome in her area, but I'm happy to add here's the list. But I also, I just want to say again, back to Commissioner Goslin. I think that we can work with the data that we do have and the data that we get from MPD to figure out how we can connect people to more services. I I really struggle with public labeling of individuals that are receiving government assistance. Like we're having problems with profiling in general in this country. I don't want to be labeling people as voucher holders where they can be discriminated against in communities. So we can work with the programs that we have in place and connect people to their caseworkers and make sure that they're engaging in services. And we will work from that standpoint, but I think publicly disclosing numbers of voucher holders isn't productive. But again, I'm having these conversations frequently. I'm very happy to extend my focus to three, four G as well. I think that the mayor agrees that this is an important issue that needs to be discussed, and we're having those discussions. And I'm, 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 I feel optimistic about where we are headed. We've created a hotline for people to call. I believe it's two one one. I can put it in the chat for sure to report behavioral issues in apartment buildings, and it's specific for tenants and for property managers. We're making a lot of headway here, and I am looking forward to updating you guys on what we can do moving forward.
Hey, commissioners, we are a little over, but I want to finish the round of questions. So Commissioner Nagy, I don't know if you have your hand still up.
I do. Yeah, thank you. I do.
So is Commissioner Nagy, Grunwald, Finacy, then Goslin. And if you can try to keep your questions to about a minute, that would be great. Thank you.
It's really more of a comment than a question, so I'll try to keep it short. Kendall, thank you very much. It's very good to know that there is this hotline. I wasn't aware of that. I'm not interested in profiling people for vouchers. I want to make that abundantly clear. I am happy for you to add this building to your list of concerns in three, four G and particularly SMD oh seven. And I hope that you'll just keep in touch with me about what you find out and what you're able to accomplish. And thank you for your help as always.
Commissioner Grunwald.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly say that I don't think we even really need an official list of how many voucher residents are living on Upper Connecticut Avenue. Because for several years now, the people who live in those buildings have been complaining about the horrendous circumstances under which they have to live with people who are not getting proper services. And they are telling us that their buildings are fifty percent voucher residents or twenty-five percent voucher residents when the city said that that the apartment buildings would never, were never supposed to reach those levels. So I think that there are a number of community activists who basically have this information and can supply us with that information if the official numbers are not forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finacy.
Yeah, hi. I think the one thing I would hope that the the information that does get to MPD is if there are folks who have like psych issues, whether they are neurodivergent or have some issues. The an encounter with law enforcement can not go the same way for people with psychiatric issues. And it, you know, certain kinds of training with MPD can really help that, but it does help if the, I think the officers are aware of the issues of people that they are dealing with so they can respond appropriately.
Well, we have, we have offices that are trained yearly with for individuals with mental illness. Mental health consumers. So, so yes, we're quite aware of individuals' needs when it comes to that aspect.
Commissioner Goslin.
Yeah, my comment is addressed to Kendall. I'd be happy to find out that we have a better grip on this problem as a result, perhaps of a hotline or other mechanisms. But I've been a commissioner for five years and I have about half of my constituents are in apartment buildings, and this has been a problem consistently. And Lieutenant O knows that there are buildings in, for example, the Kenmore in my district where they have, the police have substantial, substantial quarterly calls from that, from that building. And at least to date, what the city has done has not been adequate to address the safety concerns, both the safety concerns of the surrounding neighborhood, but most importantly, the safety concerns of people in the apartments. So I I hope the hotline works. I hope you're right that there are workarounds, but I suspect that the way to handle this is to provide at least MPD with some statistical information. And I agree with Liz's point that a hundred percent you've, you've you, you know, everybody in the building is. So there, you know, there are ways to roll up, there are ways to handle that. But I just, I do, I do think that just the hotline is, we're going to discover doesn't do the job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Lieutenant Olivier, for coming out again and being with us for two segments on the agenda. Really appreciate it. That was a great discussion. And I'm sure we will be back in touch with you to have additional discussions on the public safety issues in our neighborhood. Thank you so much. And I did get your email. I posted the link in the chat. So if everyone looks in the chat, I just posted the link for, let's see, the nuisance OAG's Office for Nuisance Properties. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Lisa, for that posting.
All right. Good evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, so the next item on our agenda, and as we discussed at the top of the meeting, we will not have the PEPco discussion, so we're going to move straight into the discussion and possible vote on a resolution supporting the DC Bottle Bill. This is both an informational and a business topic in the me, in the sense that we will be having a presentation to go with this as well as a possible vote by the commission. Given that kind of structure, I'm going to ask Commissioner Sherman to do a two minute introduction into the topic, followed by the speakers three minutes to discuss the topic, and then I want to open it up to the community. So that way, in the informational section, the community can get an opportunity to really ask their questions. Commissioners can listen in. Following the community section, then we'll move into the business portion of this topic. Commissioner Sherman, I will ask you to put a motion on the floor. And once it's properly seconded, then the commissioners will go into the discussion on the motion, which will be the resolution. We'll have two rounds of commissioner discussions, and then we can extend that if we need to. So Commissioner Sherman, it's on you.
Great. Well, thank you. And I'm actually very excited to have this conversation. I want to acknowledge that we have in our community and Chevy Chase has been having a very robust discussion over the last several days on the resolution, but also on the bottle bill itself. There have been lots of posts on the Chevy Chase listserv. I believe Mary Rouse, if I looked a moment ago, was on the call, and I want to thank her for supporting that conversation. There have been comments submitted to the ANC website through the comments form. Constituents have reached out directly to commissioners. There have been three surveys in the field, one in my SMD, one in Carol Grunwald's, and one in Liz Nagy's. And the last time I checked, just about two minutes ago, there were four hundred and fifty or thereabouts replies to those three different surveys. So there has been very robust community engagement and participation in this conversation for which, again, I express my gratitude to one and all. There's a resolution here before the commission and before the community that has its own particulars in reference to draft legislation called the Bottle Bill that the DC Council is now considering. And as we think about the structure of this conversation, a lot of the comments on the listserv, of course, have been about the Bottle Bill, which is understandable since our resolution deals with that. But we're also focusing here on what we want to say about the Bottle Bill as opposed to what the Bottle Bill says. So when we get to that point in the conversation with the commission, I want us to sort of remind ourselves that that's what we're looking at. The resolution that I have drafted for the commission, the community consider does three things at the end of the day. It advises the district government as proposed of commission support for the Recycling Refund and Litter Reduction Amendment Act of twenty twenty-five, aka the Bottle Bill. It also encourages the council to continue to address the concerns of the business community. And we've heard from business community members. We've heard from merchants on Connecticut Avenue. We've heard from Ki Yun previously. He's been on the listserv. I believe he's on the call tonight from McGruders. So we want to be very sensitive to the concerns of the business community, and the draft resolution seeks to do that. Thirdly, it also encourages the council to explore ways to offer assistance as needed for older persons and those with disabilities who could be disproportionately impacted by the bill. So those are the three things that the, that the resolution calls on the commission, calls on the council, rather, to take into account from our commission. The resolution in terms of the background identifies a number of concerns about pervasive pollution, particularly by plastic bottles across the district, but I'm going to leave consideration of those issues to the presentation that Stephanie Miller is going to make here momentarily. So I just want to say thank you to the community for the robust conversation to date. Thank you for everyone on the call. We welcome your comments and concerns. I want to acknowledge Stephanie Miller, who is the founder and the head of Zero Waste in DC, but in her capacity tonight as a liaison for the Sierra Club, speaking to the Bottle Bill. Also Chris Powell, who is a colleague at Sierra Club, and Susan Shore, who's a co-chair of the Return, Refund and Recycle Coalition that has been a primary driver of the, of the Bottle Bill. They're all three with us tonight, and I want to thank them. I know Susan is out in Oregon visiting family, so I particularly want to extend thank you to her for joining. She is a resident in the district and our ANC and zero seven, SMB zero seven, and Stephanie Miller is also a Chevy Chase resident in, in zero one. So with that, Commissioner Gore and colleagues, the commission, I'll turn it over to Stephanie for a three minute presentation, then we'll proceed as Commissioner Gore outlined. Over to you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Bruce, and I, thanks for the introduction. We actually have a fourth person from the coalition. The co-head, Chris Weiss, is also on this call. So welcome to Chris Weiss as well. I want to just remind people, the problem this bill is seeking to address is DC's really serious problem with beverage container litter. We know from the ten states with bottle bills that this legislation reduces container pollution by up to eighty-four percent. And it would come with other benefits to our community as well, including tripling current recycling rates. The Bottle Bill requires that the big beverage companies responsible for the litter problem pay for the solution rather than us as taxpayers. Just briefly reminding people how it would work. The bill would introduce a fully refundable ten cent deposit on beverages sold in cans as well as plastic and glass bottles. Retailers would collect the deposits from customers and customers would get the deposit back when they return their containers. Retail stores larger than two thousand square feet that take back containers will receive a four cent handling fee per container to compensate them for their costs. So that means that stores like McGruders in our ANC will receive this monetary compensation. An update on the bill briefly. The bill was introduced on January fifteenth by eleven of thirteen councilmember. Others to hear their concerns, and those conversations are ongoing. There was a twelve hour hearing on October first with over two hundred witnesses plus two hundred and fifty more who submitted written testimony, and the bill is currently being examined by the council's relevant committees. So the resolution that you are voting on this evening was crafted specifically to address the concerns that have arisen in this community, including those of small business, as Bruce mentioned. The concern that we've heard the most in this ANC so far is whether beverage prices will increase as a result of this bill. And what I can say is that experience in the other ten Bottle Bill states shows that manufacturers and distributors do not increase the price on their products when a Bottle Bill is implemented. The American Beverage Association, which is made up of the large beverage companies that will bear the cost of implementing this bill, has a well-funded campaign to scare residents into believing they can expect beverage prices to increase. If the association could find one instance of price increases in any of the ten states with bottle bills, they would have cited it. In testimony, I read recently to the council, there's a small business owner, Anda Greenie, who describes why he supports the bill. He says, "Good policy that makes our city cleaner and more attractive is good for business. Tourist notice, workers notice, residents notice. A city that leads on environmental solutions attracts the kind of customers and talent that grow businesses." And I agree wholeheartedly with that. We've seen in the ten states that have bottle bills that they work to dramatically decrease litter and dramatically boost recycling rates. DC's proposed bill includes the very best lessons learned from those states. We strongly encourage you to pass this resolution this evening, and we're happy, of course, to take questions.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Before we go to community comments, I believe Commissioner Gore, that's what we'd like to do now, just have community participation at this point. I do want to. I do want to give you the results of the survey that I ran in my single-member district. It is still open, but I've gathered the findings for the purpose of this discussion tonight. I had about 252 responses, and currently, they run 65% in favor of the bill and 27% opposed, with a few people saying they have no preference. So I decided indication of support from my constituents for the Bottle Bill. The, I know that Liz Nagy had a survey, Carol Grunwald did as well. I, Carol, Commissioner Grunwald, Commissioner Nagy, do you want to mention the results of yours quickly before we go to community comments?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So I sent out the survey to about 500 households in my SMD. 107 of them replied. And so basically, that's 1 in 5 responded. That's 20% of the households in my SMD responded. And the majority, 57% said yes to the bill, 25% said no, and the remaining 17% said either depends, or they're unsure, or it doesn't matter to them. So we did have 57% response saying yes, yes, for the bill. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Nagy, would you want to mention the results from your SMD?
Sure. Yeah. Hang on, just let me make sure that I'm with you. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. So as of just moments ago, it's 59.49% in favor and 31.65 against. 5.06% of respondents said it depends, 3.8% said they need more information, and there are 25 comments, and many of the comments focus on concerns that people have about the Bottle Bill. And I sent my survey out to 226-ish people in SMD 07, and I got a return of 79, which isn't too bad.
Great, thank you. And I sent mine out to about 1,000. So, okay, with those results in, that is a good sampling of people's opinion in our three respective SMDs. Let's open it up for community comments. Please raise your hand, if you wouldn't mind, and then we will recognize you. And anyone is welcome to participate. Cal, please, go ahead.
Yeah.
Commissioner Simmons, I see your hand is raised. We're going to do community members first, and then we'll go to commissioners on this portion of the agenda. Cal, go ahead.
I have two questions about this. One is, if you buy a case of 36 bottles of water, which I have to do for my mother, for example, that costs $5, that's about the same, I think the 10 cents is going to be, going to make it, you know, another 3.50 on top of that. Is that correct? Is that, and so a small 10, 8-ounce bottle or 16-ounce bottle will be the same deposit as a gallon bottle? The second question I have is, why would McGruders be lumped in the same category as Safeway? Safeway is a major change, and they're considered both mid-level retailers, according to what I read in one of the listserv posts, but McGruders should, I think they should be exempt. That's my opinion.
Thank you. We'll take these one at a time, and the virtue here of having representatives who've been working on the Bottle Bill is, of course, to be able to answer these questions specifically. So Stephanie, or Susan, or Chris, if you'd like to handle these questions as they come up about the Bottle Bill itself.
I'll start, and my colleagues can chime in. Yes, the deposit that's currently foreseen, 10 cents, is per container. So that's correct, but it's a deposit. So you pay it, you get it back as soon as you return the bottles. So if you return the bottles and you buy the exact same amount, you will net that out, right, the next time you go to purchase the exact same amount of bottles? It's a good question about McGruders versus Safeway, different sizes, you're right. And there is a size threshold that's foreseen in the current language of the bill, and that's 2,000 square feet. So mom-and-pop shops are exempt, they can possibly opt in if they want to be part of the program, because it could be good for them, but they are not required. Oops, I've just... Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, don't know what happened. But the McGruders and Safeway, I was saying, is a good question. The threshold is 2,000 square feet. If the retail store is less than 2,000 square feet, McGruders is not, then those stores are exempt from having to, according to the bill, having to redeem the bottles. They can opt in to redeem the bottles if they choose to, because they want to for their business. But in the current wording of the bill, McGruders, you're correct, is treated the same way as Safeway.
Okay, and for folks who can't actually physically get out to do that, and they recycle, they're going to lose their deposits, that's what's going to happen.
Susan, I think you wanted to add something. Do you want to do that, and then I'll...
Yeah, sure. So what I just wanted to add is that what the law is going to require is for the beverage distributors to create a stewardship organization, and the stewardship organization will come up with a plan on how it's going to meet the return and recycling rates mandated in the bill. So it really will be, and that plan will be reviewed and has to be approved by the Department of Transportation and the Environment. So we have to see what goes into the plan. It's possible, and I'm not making a promise about this, but it's possible, in a ward like Ward 3, that has currently something like 15 full-service grocery stores, that that may be sufficient to achieve the refund, the return and recycling targets in the bill. So, but the law is setting the framework, and so it wants to include medium-sized stores, because they're going to be especially important in other wards, such as Wards 7 and 8, where they have 2 and 1 full-service groceries only. So we have to make sure that the law is flexible enough to accommodate both well-endowed wards like our own and less well-endowed wards east of the Anacostia River. Thanks.
Cal, did that answer your question?
It did. It didn't answer the one about if people are physically unable to get to these places. Because we have the highest concentration of seniors here.
Yes, so, Cal, if I can try to address that, in the last briefing meeting about the Bottle Bill on October 15th, this question came up from a resident who was worried about that. And so the draft resolution for your A and C includes language urging the council to take that into account. It's toward the end of the resolution, encouraging the council to explore exemptions or other assistance for older persons and those with disabilities who could be disproportionately impacted by the bill.
Please go ahead, Chris. Go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to quickly add that, in that respect, the sponsors of the bill, councilmember Nadeau and the other councilmembers who co-introduced it, specifically called out in the bill that they asked the stewardship organization working with DOE to place recycle, either recycle locations or the reverse vending machine, so they are convenient in every single ward. So they want to make sure that it really is possible for the majority of people to get out and return these, or ask a neighbor or a friend to help them out.
Yes, and I just wanted to reinforce what Chris just said about asking a neighbor or friend to help out. We did have a meeting to learn a little bit more about how other Bottle Bill states handle persons with disabilities and elderly residents. And what we learned is that many of them might have home health aides that come to visit, and sometimes they will kind of split deposit returns with a home health aide, or ask a home health aide to make the returns for them. Sometimes elderly residents are taken to a place of worship on a weekly basis, and that could be an opportunity for them to also have somebody who's driving them to that place of worship to drop off the bottles and cans. But people tend to make arrangements to accommodate, so that they can get their deposit returns. Thanks.
Okay, so we're staying with...
I think going to Key Yoon, I want to keep our answers as concise as possible. We're only 25 minutes left in this session, and we've only had one community member speak. So please take that into account. Key?
Yes, thank you. I did discuss this at length on the listserv. There's, I mean, a lot of questions, and I think a lot of problems associated with this bill. And I think, one is that I think we overestimate our city's importance to suppliers and wholesalers. The bottle redemption program has never been implemented on a city basis. It's always been by state. And last state to implement that was Hawaii in 2002. So since over 20 years, no other state has actually tried to pass a bill like this. Maryland tried to pass something similar and was unsuccessful last year. So I tried to give this example as economy of scale on the listserv, because to compare us to Michigan is not a good comparison. Michigan is 96,000 square miles, D.C.'s 68. Their population is 10 million, and D.C. has 700,000. So space-wise, they're 1,400 times bigger than us. Population-wise, they're 14 times bigger than us. So what works for a state of Michigan won't really, doesn't guarantee that it will work for D.C., right? So that when we say that the suppliers will be fronting the cost, it's easy to say that, and it's easy to draft a bill saying that you need to do this, but there's no price tag on this. No one knows how much we're burdening the suppliers to actually make this program work. And it's not the deposit, it's the establishment of recycling centers, fleets of vehicles, purchasing of reverse vending machines, maintenance and operations of them. These are, we're talking millions and millions of dollars overseen by a nonprofit entity who has no track record of efficiency at all. So we're assuming all these things will work out without actually having planned for any of this, without actually having thought about what it actually looks like. So, I mean, what I see it as, we're forging ahead, taking a vote without giving careful consideration, without really thinking about its unintended consequences. And I've stated in many ways, unintended consequences will be that the prices will go up. I'll have to compete against stores right across the border in friendship heights, and they won't be subjected to this. And then, two, there's the space concern that I've raised. My store is over 2,000 square feet. Storing all these recyclables indoors that are going to be contaminated and dirty is not going to be conducive for handling, doing business. No one wants to shop at my store if it's going to reek like a garbage can, and I have no way of controlling that. So it's, the way I see it is, this bill is actually a death sentence for a business like mine. And I try to make that very clear. If it costs $8 for a case of water to be sold at my store, including the deposit, and it costs $4 quarter of a mile north of us, our customers are going to go there, not here. And so all these unintended consequences people consider as minor inconvenience is actually a grave concern for me and all the other businesses that's along the border. There's so many other issues with it. But, you know, the fact that the price will go up, and the fact that it would make me uncompetitive, and it would make my store dirtier, are really the main reasons why I oppose a resolution like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Key. Appreciate that. Mary Rouse, and if colleagues on the call, Stephanie, Chris, Susan, have any response you'd like to make, we can do it very quickly, but I do want to get to all of the community members. Mary Rouse, then Ann LaPorta.
Hi, yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think it's premature for the A and C to take a vote on this tonight. I know that, Bruce, thank you for bringing this up in February and other times, but this discussion did not actually start on the listserv until after the October 1st hearing. There was no publicity on this listserv about the October 1st hearing. And all those people, those 200 people that went, probably had inside information somewhere. I don't know where they got it, because I try to keep my ear to the ground on all kinds of things, and I really didn't know about this Bottle Bill too much. I do see that Bruce posted the listserv about meetings that he held, and it's really wonderful that he did that, but I think it's just premature right now for the A and C to do this. And I really want to agree with Mr. Yoon that I will go across the line if I have to buy anything with bottle, any bottled drinks. I will go across the line before I will inconvenience myself. I'm a big recycler. I believe in recycling. I believe in protecting our environment. I'm the first one to say, don't put a house in a landfill. Don't tear down houses and put them in landfills, you know, and it just pales by comparison when you put a house in a landfill, if you put a few bottles in a landfill, you know, it's not the same. So I think it's wonderful that people want to solve the problem of pollution in the city. I don't think, you know, I don't see a lot of bottles on the side of the road, but I believe people that they do accumulate. But why don't we take a look at the problem and figure out the best way to solve the problem? Is the best way to solve the problem to do what this bill does? I do note that the organizers of the bill quietly organized it. They decided not to submit it as an initiative, probably because they thought it might fail. I don't know. But they quietly organized the council, and at the beginning of this year, they produced a bill that was supported by, I guess, 11 of the 13 councilmembers, which is pretty damn good organizing, but it was done, you know, without most people noticing. I think it was done quietly, in an attempt to just ball people over. So it strikes me that this is the exact kind of thing that our A and C has been trying to change. Some of the commissioners on this A and C have advocated for listening to the people and not just going forward with ideas that the commissioners themselves thinks are great, but in fact, listening to people and letting things be grassroots. I question whether this is really a grassroots effort. It's an effort that's well-organized, and it was well-organized to bring in 11 of 13 councilmembers at the very beginning. Who wouldn't do that politically? That's a fine way to do something politically. But the bottom line is, the people were left out. And so now we're getting involved, and we're listening and hearing things, and I must admit, I'm a bit frustrated that this was all done essentially by people who, you know, just wanted to be effective, and they are effective, but they're not bringing the people with them, although it seems like a lot of people do support the idea. But I think if the details become more apparent, people may back off from their support. So while I do support the idea, obviously, all of us support the idea of a clean environment and recycling. We all do. We do it very well in Ward 3. I think that the idea is to identify the problem, identify what the problem is, and figure out another way to solve it that won't involve so many people and unintended consequences, you know, as others have mentioned. So I know that there's somebody charged with cleaning the Anacostia, but maybe that's the approach to take. I don't know. I don't pretend to be an expert in this area. I know others are. But couldn't we kind of identify the problem and start with that, and work our way toward a solution that is more efficient and effective, and doesn't pull so many people in that are going to have problems with this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I think that your comments probably merit some response from our colleagues on the call, Stephanie, or Susan, or Chris, or Chris Weiss, or Chris Powell, one of you, please, if you'd like to respond. There was a lot there.
And responses, please keep them to a minute.
So I can start off by saying that we have actually been doing a tremendous amount of community outreach on this Bottle Bill. We've been working on it for three years. We held a petition for about a year and a half. Last year, we conducted a postcard-writing campaign, asking residents to write postcards to their councilmembers. Stephanie tabled in the Lafayette Farmers Market and got quite a number of supportive postcards. So there has been a tremendous... So there's there has been a tremendous amount of community outreach that we have done. And this ANC has held two, if not three, sessions about the bottle bill, if I'm not mistaken. So just wanted to start with that. But we are grassroots organizers. We are a coalition of over 30 nonprofit organizations that have been working on this and all engaging in community outreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Laporta.
Commissioner Sherman, let me just do it in order. I will call the speakers in attendance. Thank you. Ann.
Yeah, I was just saying, when I read how you get your money back, is I don't know how you get your money back. Because what it says is you go in and you take all your dirty bottles and then you get a ticket. And from that, you don't know whether you get your money back or whether you have to buy something and the money is deducted from the price of the groceries or what happens. On the other hand, I agree with everything that Mary said. I think the blue cans are very effective. And I think I will go to the Bethesda Safeway. For one thing, if you buy half your things in Maryland and half your things in the district, there's no way that you're going to separate your district bottles from your Maryland bottles. It's really much too complicated and you haven't really discussed it or worked it out. And I think there are too many loopholes in this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any response from Commissioner Sherman or the presenters? Okay, thank you, Ann. Ron Con.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I just want to echo what Lee or Key said. And I want to ask the question, if 10 states have approved this law, the last state being in 2002, Hawaii, how does that speak to validity of the law and the usefulness of it? If that's your track record, you've got 40 states that haven't done this. You know, that does not instill confidence in this programmatic approach. The other point is being that we do need to pay attention to merchants like McGruders with them and the health of that enterprise being paramount to the character and the state or the area that we live in. I do listen to what he had to say. And I think that's more important to reflect on than I think the discussion or maybe the bill has so far addressed. Thank you.
Any response?
Well, one thing I would say, and I mean Susan might want to add to it, is we have 10 states that have very successfully implemented bottle bills. These 10 states make up 27% of the population in the United States. But they recycle over 50% of all the bottles recycled in the United States. And these are states with cities the size of DC who have to, you know, implement their own programs within the city. And so that that argument is probably not a good one. But it works. It works in 10 states and it can work easily in DC. It would take some time to implement and we have a roadmap in the bill that it takes about, I think it takes up about three years until we get to full. Is that true, Susan? Maybe you could speak to that.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last point, Chris. But what I did want to add was that the reason why we don't have more bottle bills is because the American Beverage Association fights very hard and invests millions of dollars in each state that is trying to pass one. And and so we're working very hard to overcome the pushback that they are putting out there now. As Stephanie said, they're engaging in scare tactics, trying to convince people that their prices are going to go up when there is absolutely no evidence that that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Callahan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions about the way this particular bill is set up. And I'm going to preface that by saying that I grew up in Massachusetts, which has had a bottle bill since 1981. And it works very well. And I think maybe there might be some things considered in the resolution that would make it more effective. But Massachusetts has a lot of large cities. And this bottle redemption bill in Massachusetts has worked very well for many years. Where does the 10 cents go in terms of who gets what proportion of money? How is that set up? In order to make recycling easier for residents? Currently in Massachusetts, the deposit is still five cents. They've been trying to raise it, but that hasn't gone through. In Vermont, there are three levels, five cents, 10 cents, and 15 cents. And all of those have considerations for size of the bottles and many other respects. My other question has to do with the stewardship organization. What are they going to do? How are they going to be appointed? There are a lot of questions about that. And I think with creative recycling options, my sisters, for example, of whom I have two who live in Massachusetts, just throw their bottles into recycling. They get sorted. That money that they're not getting back, they're donating to the state recycling program. There are many aspects of this that I think could be considered in a resolution. I am a proponent of this resolution. Bottle bills work. They worked in Massachusetts. My little brother collected bottles to get money to go out and do what he wanted to do. But the intricacies need to be considered.
So a lot of a lot of these things have been considered in the legislation and it reflects best practices that we have learned from other states. So Massachusetts, you know, does have a successful bottle bill program, we agree. But they have tried to increase their deposit from five cents to 10 cents. Unfortunately, their deposit amount is mandated in the initial law and can only be changed if the law is amended. And the American Beverage Association works very hard to prevent that from happening so they can try to shut it down. Our law has starts out with an initial deposit, but it also provides a framework that would enable us to increase the deposit should it be necessary if the mandated recycling targets are not met. As long as the recycling targets are met, we'll keep that, but we have the flexibility to do that. It also indicates who would be in the stewardship organization. And again, the stewardship organization would have to be approved by DOE. Thank you.
I may ask one more question. Where does the 10 cents go? Who gets what of the 10 cents?
So it largely goes back and forth between the retailer and the customer. But there will be a pool of unclaimed deposits. And those unclaimed deposits, 25% of them are going to go to the stewardship organization to cover some of its costs. And the remaining 75% are going to be used for environmental programs. For example, to help buy lead water filters for low income residents who still have a lead service line so that they don't have to buy all the plastic water bottles that we've been seeing referenced in the chat. Thank you.
Let me go to Thomas Sneeringer.
Thank you. Just a quick factual question. How do? How do you determine that the bottle that was bought paid the paid the deposit? For example, we've already heard a number of people said they're going to go to Maryland to get their bottles. But how about if they bring their used bottles to McGruders? Are they going to get their chip?
The the bottles will have a tracking code. So the bottles, if someone wants to buy a bottle in Maryland and think they're going to get a 10 cent deposit back in DC, that won't work. The machines will not accept the bottles from that aren't from DC. Is that your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any more community questions? Okay. I'm gonna go to Commissioner Rand. I'm gonna put more time on the clock, but let's start out with Commissioner Simmons.
Hi, thank you. So as a native Michigander, I've experienced the bottle bill in Michigan. I used to collect bottles when gas was under a dollar. The gas money, but I had a couple of questions and they were answered. I wanted to know who the what was our plan for unclaimed deposits? That was answered. My other question was, has the organization who started this have had any lobbying towards Maryland and Virginia to kind of get them to do the same thing? Similar with? Okay, put in trash. Similar to the bag tax. So, you know, bags in DC, so I would go to Alexandria, then Alexandria has started a bag tax. So I just wondered if you guys had started any of that. And then my last my last two was, who are the two council members who did not support? You said you guys mentioned 11 of 13. Who are the other two? And then are there any projected studies on the effects of how this will affect the DC recycling program?
Yeah, maybe I can take some of these. So yes, there are efforts underway in both Maryland and Virginia to pass a bottle bill. And we believe that they are looking towards DC to exercise leadership, just like we did with the bag fee over a decade ago. I think if we were to pass this law, I think that would prompt a response from the Maryland legislature, which is considering and is likely to have a bottle bill up on its agenda again this year. And there are also advocates in Virginia. Of course, that will largely depend on the outcome of their elections in November. The more likely that Virginia goes blue, the more likely they would pass a bottle bill. The two council members that did not support this were Kenyon McDuffie and Councilmember Trayon White. And I'm sorry, I don't remember the third question. Maybe somebody else has that.
I think you asked about recycling rates.
No, I was asking if you guys had did any studies on projected effects to DC's recycling program if this were to be implemented.
It will be a really positive effect. What we estimate is that 20% of what goes into curbside recycling is beverage containers. Many people don't realize that DPW has to pay for those materials to be hauled to what's called a MRF, a material, a resource recovery center. And it has to be sorted there, which is very expensive. And we have to pay for it by weight. So all the glass bottles that get sent there actually cost the district a lot of money. Taking all of those out, which also like when glass bottles break, they contaminate what is very expensive or valuable cardboard and paper. So if we get those materials out that leak, the cardboard and paper that we are recycling will have a much higher value. So it will have it will save DPW a lot of money, which means it's going to save taxpayers a lot of money. And it's going to result in a higher quality of recyclable materials.
Thank you. Commissioner Goslin.
Yes, we've in the community discussion about this, we've heard arguments that raised concerns essentially at two ends of the spectrum. One of my constituents was with the Office of Policy at EPA, Stuart Miles McLean. And he raises the question of what the recent trends are in recycling and whether and what the income distribution is of recycling and effectively argues that deposit schemes are a tax, particularly on lower income households. I'd like you to address that. I have to say that the other much more parochial concerns come from the businesses, most of which are on my side of Connecticut Avenue, which I represent on the west side of Connecticut Avenue. My understanding, talking both to Keyun and to Malkit Ting, who owns the Chevy Chase Wine and Liquor, is that both operations are over the 2,000 foot exemption. So both would have to comply with this. And I must say that this issue of being right smack on the border of two jurisdictions that do not have a bottle bill and therefore will supply beverages for lower prices is very compelling to me and I think will do severe damage to our main street. And so just to be forthright, I'm going to oppose this measure.
Commissioner Nagy.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to something that Susan Shore, my constituent. Hi, Susan. Hi, I'm trying to understand something that you said. And then I also want to call out some stuff in the chat very briefly. You said that something about if Ward Three meets its targets, then am I understanding you correctly to say it's possible that the law won't apply to other wards in the city? I'm thinking I had to misunderstand that.
Yes, I'm sorry if if that was confusing to you.
It's not your fault if I'm confused.
No, what I'm trying to what I'm trying to say is that the stewardship organization will have to develop a plan for how it will meet the redemption and recycling targets that are called for in the in the law. So for example, after the program gets implemented and there's like, I think, a three year timeframe before the program would actually go into effect, which would allow sufficient time to create a stewardship organization, develop a plan, et cetera. So once it goes into effect, then we'll see what the plan is from the stewardship organization to have sufficient return sites. And it's important, as Commissioner Goslin was alluding to, to have sufficient return sites so that deposits don't become a tax on the poor, but that all people have a very convenient and easy place to return their bottles and cans. But what I was saying, it's possible that Ward Three has 15 full service grocery stores. It's possible that that will be the only places where we return our bottles and cans. But we won't know that until the stewardship organization develops its plan.
And Commissioner Gore, I had a couple of other small points to make. Okay, so that you roll in my hand. There was a question in the chat, how were the criteria? And this is for all of the proponents of this. How were the criteria developed to determine which businesses are exempt and which are not? I think that's a way of asking how to come up with the 2,000 square foot number. And then the second question is, can somebody please speak to bin scavenging? Whether scavenging, whether that's an issue in states where this policy is in place, particularly with regard to residential bins? And I will say that I got comments like that to my survey. So I'm interested in that question as well.
I am not sure about the 2,000 square feet where that particular number came from. I don't know if one of my colleagues has information on that. In terms of the bin scavenging, here's what we've been told. We reached out to a group of canners in New York City. So those are generally low income people in New York City that make a living off of collecting deposit cans and bottles for the refund. What they explained to us is that the canners tend to. What they explained to us is that the canners tend to establish uh ongoing relations with supplies of bottles and cans, whether that's from bars and restaurants or apartment building supers. Uh and they really questioned whether any canner would actually go through the trash and leave a mess because they need to have these established relations in order to make sufficient funds to to earn their living from this. What we have also heard from our three years of outreach tabling in, you know, at festivals and fairs across the across the district, is that in other jurisdictions, people who don't need the deposit refund leave bags of these materials out for people to collect as an act of solidarity with them. And I think we'll see um behavior like that. Thank you.
But to follow up, but I'm not sure that the question is really um addressed to professional collectors of of uh deposit-worthy material. I think people are really thinking about, you know, people just going around the neighborhood.
But those are, those are people who are co- collecting bottles and cans to earn money, right?
And I'm not disputing that, but it I I I it sounded as if you were saying these are people who um as who have an organizational structure that allows them to make a living. And I think people are more interested in whether this is sort of an ad hoc thing that people just do.
Right, what they explain to us is that there's a range of canners. So some people make their full livelihood out of it and some people contribute. For example, they said sometimes grandparents do this to help out their grandchildren um for their financial needs. There can be a whole range of uh different kinds of actors engaged in this activity.
Well, thank you.
Um so I have a question, a couple of questions. Um one, um Susan, I just want you to clarify something you said was really, really concerning to me. Um one of the things I'm concerned about, there's a few things, but you talked about the stewardship o- organization and the question came up about location of recycling centers. I'm also very concerned about equity in Ward Seven and Eight and individuals not having, um we know there's a food desert there, we know they don't have grocery stores like we do on this side of the ward. And um they are going to be at a disadvantage, no one can convince me otherwise. They are gonna be at a disadvantage of paying for bottles um and having difficulty finding places to return them. Um and you just made a statement about uh Ward Three uh could have a multitude of recycling return centers um up until the stewardship organization maybe kind of figures out um and sees like some equity across the city. That is horribly concerning to me. Um that is like a death nail for me. Uh just because that equity issue is so, so keen that we are placing a burden on residents in Seven and Eight, knowing going into this that there's a possibility, which I think is strong, that they are not gonna have sufficient recycling centers where they can go and redeem their money. And they are not gonna come to Ward Three to redeem their bottles. I think what is gonna happen is what Key said, they're gonna go to Maryland and where they don't have to pay that and have that burden. Um but for that portion of it not to be worked out, and I don't know who the stewardship organization is, we are placing a heck of a lot of trust in them to know this city and the particulars of our communities to do this right. Um woof, and I come from an oversight background, this is just kind of backwards to me. Uh that is really troubling, so I just wanna kind of make that as a statement and.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
So um they will have to provide additional return locations. What I was trying to say is here in Ward Three, it's possible that the grocery stores would be the only return locations. That will not be the case in Ward Seven and Eight. The stewardship organization has to ensure that there are sufficient return locations in all wards and DOE is empowered to mandate a minimum number of return locations in wards that suffer from food deserts. So Ward Seven and Eight will have sufficient return locations. They're likely to be different from what we have in Ward Three because they don't have so many grocery stores. So the stewardship organization is going to have to provide incentives, say, for groups of corner stores so that they can share a reverse vending machine if they're located close by. They will have to set up their own redemption centers. They will have to provide reverse vending machines in heavily trafficked areas. But they will definitely have to ensure, we have worked so hard. Equity has been really the foundation of our campaign from the very beginning. We started this campaign because we saw the disproportionate impact of beverage container litter on residents that um that, you know, border the Anacostia River because so much of the the beverage containers come through the storm um s- sewer network and wind up in the Anacostia River. So all wards are contributing to this litter problem. The residents of Wards Five, Seven and Eight are saddled with the outcome of this problem. But this bill has got equity built into it to ensure that our neighbors east of the river are going to have sufficient places to return their bottles and cans.
But we just don't know what that looks like at this point.
We don't know what it looks like at this point. We won't know the details on that until the plan is produced and the plan will be subject to public comment and oversight and approval from DOE. I I hope that, does that reassure you at all? Or you're you still, you still look un- unreassured?
Well, I'm not, I'm 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 not because uh and I don't wanna take up time. Um we'll go a second round if we have to, but um my other question is, the um resolution has providing uh in a whereas clause, some of the options to ease the burden, like providing the per container handling fee in example, up to four cents to offset labor and sanitation costs. Um so right now, the legislation, I just wanna clarify, the legislation does not have any per container handling fee to offset the business handling cost. Am I correct about that?
No, it does include a four cent per container handling fee to compensate businesses such as McGruder's for their costs in collecting and hauling the containers.
Okay, that's in the current legislation.
That is in the current legislation.
It's also, it's also mentioned in the resolution.
Right, I cited the resolution.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that it was in the legislation. What has been the business community feedback on the four cents? Do we have a so, it, what's, first of all, I think, you know, it has been asked, what's the cost analysis to business? We know there is gonna be a cost to business and is the four cents sufficient? Um can, what can you tell me about that?
I can tell you that in other jurisdictions with bottle bills, their handling fee, to the extent that they have one, can be as low as two, two and a half cents per container. Um some jurisdictions have three or three and a half cents per container. There are a few of them that have four cents per container. So this seems to be uh on the generous side.
Okay, but I understand the other jurisdictions. My question is, is it sufficient for DC business?
As, yes, I mean, you know, based on what we're seeing in other jurisdictions and there is a mechanism um in the legislation that could increase the handling fee if it turns out that it would not be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Let me go to Mary Ralph.
Thank you. Um I I wanted to echo my concerns as well, Lisa. I share your concern about Ward Seven and Eight and what what impact it will have because after all, this is all about cleaning up Wards Five, Six, Seven and Eight. And so this brings me back again to the same issue. We have a problem. Is this the best way to solve it? When we have to mandate this and mandate that and make sure DOE does this? I don't have a lot of confidence in DOE. I don't have a lot of confidence in in an organization that I'm supposed to expect is gonna come through on all this. Why are we doing this in such a complicated way? The the best way to solve a problem is to take the simplest solution. The simplest solution, not the most complex solution. The simplest solution. I note that on the website for this Shoes Clean Water Coalition, they talk about environmental justice and that this seems to be more of a a political uh effort here. It's certainly an effort to clean up, but it also seems to be a political effort, as was mentioned earlier, about lead water. Um and they talk about PFAS, uh forever chemicals. And we all know there's a problem with those, with our um soccer fields and our playing fields in the city. And if people are concerned about PFAS getting into water, which I know everybody is, why don't we focus on that issue in a way that doesn't cir- you know, talk about a bottle bill? Why don't we focus on getting the city to pass some some legislation that prohibits such fields so that they don't create the problem? Why is this organization focused on PFAS without dealing with a solution like that? It just seems to be very convoluted and complicated and unnecessarily burdensome for so many people. It's just, it's it's just mind-boggling to me that 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 the good deeds and the good ideas here are gonna get lost in all kinds of administrative nightmares and unintended consequences. So I just really, I realize everybody's put a lot of time and effort in this, but really, it seems to me the most effective way to handle the problem is to look for the simplest solution. The one that doesn't involve 50,000 moving parts and everybody behaving the right way. Thanks.
Let me go to Commissioner Brunwald and then we'll, I'll ask Commissioner Sherman to um put the motion on the table.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to say that I am strongly in favor of this resolution. Uh we are so behind, we are so behind states that have had these successful bottle bills for years. I mean, we have outstanding results from those states. This this bill, this bottle bill, wouldn't take effect until three years from now. There, there is a crew of experts, which we are not, who are working on this issue. They have experts from all over the country aiding them. They have three years to get it right. We can start slowly. But I feel that if we don't do this now, if not now, when? When will we start this? All all we're doing with the resolution is giving the the AOK that we would like to do something about uh all this pollution that we're creating. Um and we're, we're, all we're saying is that we'd like to give this a start. I think that it's really shameful, actually, not to do this. Uh the environmental effects of all this uh pollution from uh single-use plastics and and glass and aluminum and so on are devastating. And in our community, they are very, you know, seen mostly in in the poorer wards of our of our city. Um I think that um most of the constituents that we polled recognize the need for this, although there may be some fussing about all the particulars, but they, we have three years to work out the particulars. Uh other ANC's and other ANC's, uh other ANC's in the city have approved um this uh this bill, this proposed bill. So I would just like to say that uh I think uh what are we waiting for? Let's just start the process. We have three years to work it out. This is a very exciting thing. This is a great thing that we're, that the city is trying to do. They're way behind. They should have done this years and years ago. So I would just like to thank everyone who's worked so hard on this and I I I really believe that this is the right thing to do. Let's, let's give a boost to our our council and say, yes, this is what we would like to do in our community. We'd like to get rid of all this pollution. And 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 as an aside, I would also like the council, and in a separate, in a separate bill, to consider banning single-use plastic bottles, period. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brunwald. Let me go um to Laura Nun and then Cheryl Barnes. Um Laura?
Hi, sorry, um I'm Laura Nun. I am also one of the co-leads um on the 3RC bottle bill effort. Um I am a Ward Seven resident, so I just wanted to give some insight, you know, kind of on behalf of folks um near and east of the river. Um I've done a lot of personal outreach um in my community. And one of the things um that I noted when talking to people in the community about the bottle bill is that he, older residents of the city remember when there was a deposit, a deposit process before and they remember it fondly. They remember as, you know, as in their youth, collecting bottles, returning them, getting the deposit, using that deposit to um, you know, purchase candy or whatever their needs were. They remember also helping their grandparents and it being a a really uh way that they could um stay engaged with their community. They would help grandparents, aunts and uncles. Um and just to follow up on what Susan said about it looking, the process looking different in um Ward Seven and Eight than it does in your community. There, there are a lot of different methods that can be used over here that won't be the same over there. Um, you know, people over here might do more of that um collection at community rec centers, at metro stops. Um there's lots of ways that this can be implemented and our uh group has met with um core about um making sure that uh we address any concerns around racial equity. So all those things have been taken into account when we, when we drafted, when we helped support this um bill. So I just wanted to uh make sure that people understood that that people on this, on in Ward Seven, Eight, Five, Six are really um supportive of this effort and we are hoping that our neighbors across the city will be supportive too.
Thank you. And let me wrap up with Chevy Chase voice, Cheryl Barnes.
Thank you. This is finally an opportunity for this community to join hands and work together on something that can help everybody. This is environmentally sound and common sense and um, I'm not sure who that is, but anyways, I I think that something could easily be repealed if it's a disaster. Um and it's not going to be, I know that already. And I cannot imagine why this ANC would vote against ANC's in 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 Ward Seven and Eight. Uh that, that just seems ludicrous to me. So um I think there's a lot of drama over this, but it's a common sense bill and you should put forth the resolution and work together as a community to eliminate the plastic trash. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those were great um discussions. At this point, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Sherman to um put his motion on the table. This part of the discussion will be commissioner discussion. Um I'm gonna give us 15 minutes on the clock to get our motion um done. Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, I move uh for consideration of the resolution. Uh do I have a second?
Commissioner Brunwald seconded.
Great.
So commissioners, we'll go into discussion at this point. Um and we will have um one round um of discussion per commissioner. Um just for time-wise, I'd like to get um each commissioner to speak before you speak twice. Um who would like to go first?
Well, as a drafter of the resolution, if I could go first and also just um respond somewhat to the comments that we've received, which have been great and I appreciate all the community input. Um first of all, uh just to focus our attention on the resolved sections of the of the resolution um that we are advising by way of this revol- re- resolution, uh the council to support uh the bottle bill, but recognizing that it remains under consideration and subject to modification. And that means that we are mindful, as their presenters have noted, that there could be changes, that there will be changes and that we're indicating flexibility in that regard for the council to do the work that it needs to do. Secondly, with respect to the business community, and I take very much to heart uh Ki Yun's comments and Commissioner Goslin's concerns about the business community on Connecticut Avenue. I have privately to commissioners expressed my own concerns about that. That's why I specifically included in the resolution options to ease the burden on businesses. And those include a number of points that I think are really important to stress. I direct your attention to them. But the last point. But the last point, and that is adopting phased implementation, beginning with large supermarkets. This is something that Susan Shore was just speaking to potentially in Ward three, followed by smaller stores once redemption demand and coverage are established. Now, this is mindful that there are not supermarkets, as we've just been discussing, in Ward seven and eight, as there are in Ward three. And so the council will have to take that into account. But many people have commented to me, have commented on the listserv, people have mentioned it tonight, about a phased implementation. The resolution speaks to that. So there are provisions already made in the resolution as it's drafted to address many of the concerns that folks on the call have had and that others in the community have had. Finally, before turning it over to other commissioners for comment, I do want to go back to what I said at the top. And that is that we as commissioners rely on our constituents to express their views. We rely on their judgment about matters before us, about matters before the city. And in the three surveys that more than 450 people responded to, overwhelmingly, the community members surveyed are in favor of this. Now, they're not on the call tonight. And they might not have published on the listserv, posted on the listserv, or written to us individually, but their views and their concerns are no less powerful because they come through another means. They were speaking to us when they took the survey and when they entered comments on the surveys. So we have hundreds of our Chevy Chase constituents who are in support of this. I just want to underscore that and speak for that mass of people who are not on the call tonight. So with that, other commissioners.
Commissioners, please raise your hand. We get two minutes each. Commissioner Goslin?
Susan, I want to go to some comments you made about how this would improve the quality of...
Commissioner Goslin, can I just ask you a clarification because I'm not clear where we are in the process? Are we discussing the resolution now at this point, or are we discussing the bill and back to the panelists?
Well, let me, let me say that's the point of order.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Goslin, I believe Commissioner Sherman is correct. The question is on the motion. So this is, this is a discussion strictly on the motion that Commissioner Sherman has on the floor.
Okay, then let me make this as a, as a statement. In, in her comments, Susan talked about how the bottle bill will improve the quality of the recycling stream and improve it by getting liquids and, and other things that damage the quality now out of the stream. But I just point out that this is precisely what Ki Yoon and Malkeet Singh at Chevy Chase Wine and Liquor are concerned about. Now, I, I understand, Commissioner Sherman, your view that we have to support, we, we have to reflect the, the views of our constituents. And in this case, I take very seriously what our constituents think about our Main Street, our fragile Main Street, fragile because our, our, our entire city i- is in a state of fragility because of the Trump administration. And fragile also because that small retail street competes with immediately adjacent, much larger commercial centers like Friendship Heights. And so I think that, given the concerns that Ki Yoon has expressed about the cost to him of space and of keeping a clean store in, that I'm going to be voting against this resolution.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, I would like to say that I don't think the mom and pop shops on Connecticut Avenue are fragile because of the bottle bill. I think they're fragile because of zoning changes. If we're going to lose our, our mom and pop shops because of zoning changes, not because they were required to, you know, cooperate with a, a bottle bill. I'd also like to point out that there are small and medium-sized businesses in the states that have successfully conducted bottle bills elsewhere. And they seem to have managed. There, there has to be a way to, to, to make things work for them and, and work for the rest of the community. I'm, I'm positive that this is not rocket science, that we can actually figure this one out. Thank you.
Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, thank you. I, I have often said that I will do what I can best ascertain is the view of my constituents. And that is in favor of the bottle bill resolution. Having said that, I've also said that I would do that even if I did not entirely agree with them, which I have to say is the case here, with apologies to the people who have worked so hard on this, on this issue. So I will be voting in favor of the resolution.
Thank you. So I still remain concerned about the way, obviously, the legislation has come down. I am really concerned about the cost to businesses. And I do believe there will be an impact. I read, and this is just, you know, for communities input, I read every testimony that came through. It took me days to do that, but I read every single testimony that was submitted on this. And I did so because it is so important to understand every perspective. And I got a lot of great information from both sides of the argument, but reading the testimony definitely caused me to understand that this legislation, I believe, does have unintended consequences for our businesses. And some of the things that, you know, I, I know we talked about, or there's a comment about the fragility of the business environment. One of the things that I didn't understand is that some of the retailers are still, still have not made the gains that they had pre-COVID. So our retailers are fragile for a number of reasons. Zoning is probably the least of them. They have not rebounded from COVID. There's extreme costs that they are concerned about. And I don't know, I do not feel like the council has done its due diligence in making sure they understand the cost to business and life cycle. And if there's a cost to businesses, if our businesses shutter for whatever reason, we're going to suffer regardless. So I, I just think there's a lot of work to be done there. I'm concerned about some of the things in the resolution. So I can't vote on the resolution as worded. I mean, I just, I cannot do that. And I'm a big supporter of the environment. I originally wanted to introduce this resolution to the commission. But as written, I have some concerns about that. Phased implementation, who's that going to benefit? Who's going to get phase one? Who's going to get phase two? And again, I go back to Ward seven and eight. I cannot have those wards that are most impacted, most harmed. And phased implementation to me kind of signals that. You're going to implement where it's easy, and it's not going to be easy over there. So we're going to have customers over there paying for something that they can't redeem unless they come across the city that's in the phased implementation. I will not vote for that in our resolution. And regarding the surveys, I haven't seen them. I take your word for what you say in terms of the number of responses and the category of responses, but I have not seen one res, one survey response. So that's something else that concerns me. And then my final concern is as an ANC, I think when we present issues like this, it's really critical for us to present like all sides. And I don't think necessarily, I feel like I've, I've heard the side of opponents as heavily as I've heard side of the proponents. So I would like to see us do a more balanced presentation to our community because there are a lot of questions that I have for, for the business community. And it could be that everything is fine, but reading that testimony certainly didn't say that. And I don't have anyone from the business community to follow up that discussion with here and hear their side of the story. So for those reasons, I can't, I can't support it. And I do think we have to listen. We have to listen to what all sides say, but we have to really listen to our opponents as well.
Can I comment on that in that the resolution with respect to the business community mentions very specifically, some district retailers, including selected businesses in Chevy Chase, have expressed concerns about the space, staffing, and sanitation challenges associated with collecting used containers. Beverage distributors have highlighted additional transportation, storage, and accounting costs required to track deposits and refunds. We then go on in the resolution to, as I've indicated previously, to identify a half dozen options that we're suggesting to the council, the council could take into account to ease the burden on businesses. When we're speaking of opposition, the opposition that we have heard primarily, and I certainly understand it, I've been, I believe in the forefront of identifying that there were concerns that we would need to address that the business community had, including Ki Yoon. And the resolution does that. With respect to others who might oppose this, we have had in the last three or four days, very robust community discussion, very robust. And with respect to soliciting the opinions of the constituents, some of us choose to do that, some of us choose not to do that. And I believe that those of us who have done that have seen the response that were we to do it, ANC 34G-wide, based on what we've seen so far, that's what we probably also see as well. So on that basis, I think there is widespread community support that I'm sensing for this. And the resolution as drafted, I believe is very balanced, takes into account the business community's concerns, takes into account the concerns of those who are older and with disabilities, and seeks to provide relief for them by way of suggesting to the council that it consider measures to provide that relief. So I, I believe we've done a pretty fair job of representing the issues and documenting the concerns and opening up for community, for, for community input.
So I'm assuming you're responding to my comment, so I'll respond to you. And, you know, I respect your opinion, but your opinion is different than mine. I believe that we could have done better. And I believe the resolution could be written better in terms of those differences in those issues. And I asked the question, is the four cents sufficient for DC businesses? And I don't have a sufficient answer. And I don't have anyone from the business community that can attest to that. If Ki said four cents is enough that my business will not suffer harm from handling these deposits, then I would have a solid answer from a DC Chevy Chase-based business on that particular aspect of the legislation. And I don't have that. And that's important to me because if it's important to our business here, it's important to our businesses across the city. And again, that is critical because of the business environment that they continue to be in. They are not in the same business environment that they were pre-COVID. Some of them are in a worse business environment post-COVID. And we still have some businesses in their testimony, if you read it, that are operating at half status. They're not even up to, you know, five days a week. So that is really critically important. And I, I hope one day in this city that we can get to drafting legislation hand in hand. I don't feel like we've been that way in, in the council when it comes to this, and I don't feel like we've been that way in the ANC when it comes to this particular piece of legislation or resolution. And there are parts in here that I disagree with in terms of the language.
So let me just make, let me just make another point.
I'm moving on to additional. We have two commissioners with their hands raised, Commissioner Grunwald and Commissioner Finacy, and I'll come back to you.
Yeah, so many points. So I, I'm just, I remain on this point. How is it that small stores in other states have been accommodated? They have years and years of experience. Is, is there something special about Chevy Chase DC where the small and medium-sized businesses here cannot be accommodated as they have been in, in states throughout the country? I don't, I don't understand that. I also would like to point out that most of the pollution from these bottles is in the poorest wards. I, I really don't understand why some commissioners are trying to help their poorest wards by, by not clearing up the pollution. I mean, that's not helping, right? And I'd also like to point out that, that all commissioners were offered the survey. We, we encouraged everyone to survey their constituents on this. So it's, it's not, I mean, it's, we can't say that you don't know what your constituents want if you didn't, if you didn't ask them. So, you know, the survey, surveys are always good because they, they reach as many people as possible in a short period of time. And I would just like to say that, again, that we have, this bill has three years before it takes effect. All these little details that are in the resolution that we pointed out for, to the council can be ironed out. Where, where, this is not our bill. This is the council's bill. This is for the entire city. It's not up to us in Chevy Chase to, to figure out, you know, every, every, solve every problem of this, you know? This is a, a citywide issue. So all we're doing with this resolution is giving the, you know, our, our, our hopes and dreams for, you know, solving this pollution to the council. We're saying, you know, please, we're on your side. We believe in this. Let's work together to find a solution that works for everyone. But yes, we believe in, in what you're trying to do, which is get, get rid of this pollution in the city. And, and by all accounts, this is the best way. A bottle bill has been shown to be the best way to, to accomplish this. So I, I, I would feel very sorry if this was defeated, but hopefully, if it is defeated by this ANC, hopefully the, the council will, will continue to work on this with the support of all the other ANC's who, who have supported it. Thank you.
Commissioner Finacy?
I'm, I'm going to yield my time right now. I'm going to hear, I'm going to pause my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Goslin? You're muted. Commissioner Goslin?
I'm happy to defer to Bruce, who I thought you were going to, but let me just, let me just address one thing that Carol said. Yes, there are 10 states in, that have done this. None, having been a reporter in the smallest of states in the Union, Rhode Island, which I think does have a bottle bill. I mean, it's still, there is no state smaller than, than the district. And, I mean, just look at our Main Street. It's three-quarters of a mile from Friendship Heights. Total Wine just opened today, today, in Friendship Heights. I mean, I, you know, if, if, if this, if, if we were to recommend to the council that they act, you know, in tandem with adjacent jurisdictions, I'd feel safer, I'd feel like I was not undermining the, the, the west side of Connecticut Avenue by giving the stores in Friendship Heights a distinct and, and immediately upon implementation, cost benefit over, over the stores on our Main Street. So, I mean, on the issue of other states having had more success, having had success, I'm sure that, so I'm sure at the borders, there have been problems, but no state is as small as the district and no state is as overwhelmed by its broad And no state is as uh, overwhelmed by its broader uh, uh metropolitan area. And um, to set ourselves apart with a big cost difference at this point, uh, I think is dangerous.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, yes, I just would like to commend my fellow commissioners being concerned about. Ward seven and eight, I hope that you all will continue that. In the spirit of majority of affordable housing is placed in Ward seven and eight, and we have an opportunity to bring housing here. In Ward three, that will support our businesses on the avenue, we spend money to keep them um, in business. Also, I don't know if you guys remember, but we had the organic wine shop that was on Connecticut Avenue, it was owned. By um, a black woman, however, that shop closed, so. And we just continue to see businesses close, but I just wanted to go back to the commissioners on the Safeway testimony that was. Um, important for me, uh, because you know, I grew up in Michigan with the bottle bill. I think we did this prior to um, recycling being important in our environment, so I think that's probably why Michigan probably um. Got onto it, but what I thought was really interesting, what Safeway said was about operational challenges. They said that um, just getting to it, tellingly, no other jurisdictions and several state decades have done so in Delaware. Where Safeway only operates actually repealed its bottle deposit law in 2010 after thirty years. In favor of expanding recycling more broadly via curbside recycling. So my thoughts with that was, okay, so if we do this bottle bill, will it affect our recycling? You know, I think when I moved here from Michigan. I thought, wow, DC has such an amazing recycling program, that's when I really became. Dedicated to recycling and I'm still dedicated to recycling right now, so I was, I'm a little concerned with that. Um, and I would just like to see more support, even in my own single member district where I have unhoused individuals. And it's always a litter problem, I'm just wondering, how can we come together as a city? And work together with picking up trash rather than saying Corinthia needs to pick up the trash or DPR needs to pick up a trash. And they're trying to pick up trash across the whole city and we have staffing shortages with trash. So my thing is, how can we work on addressing fixing the trash versus? This bottle bill, I don't know how effective it will be if we don't have this as a tri-state, even though we're not a state. If we don't have that as a part of a tri-state. So those are just my comments, so I'm neutral on the side because I grew up in the bottle bill, I see the effectiveness. But also at the same time, how will it affect? Other recycling efforts and I want us just to continue to be in a leader. With recycling here in the city.
Uh, yeah, Bruce, can I just point out, I, I know you're gonna.
Commissioner Grunwald, hang on one minute. Um, Commissioner Sherman, I said I was gonna come back to you, do you wanna raise your hand on, and go after Commissioner Grunwald, are you still in the rotation or not? Okay. Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, just let me read something that I uh, sent to one of the um. Constituents in our ANC who wrote um, to us and believe, I believe again, uh, Commissioner Goslin to Stuart Miles, McLean is your, your constituent and, and your single member district. Now, all of you were copied on this, members of the public, of course, were not. I shared with um, Stuart, a twenty twenty-one study. That was a state by state look at recycling rates for um, what are called common containers and packaging materials CCPM, basically. The types of things we're talking about here, aluminum and glass and, and plastic containers. Um, and that study focused expressly on what actually ultimately got recycled. Not what was collected at the curb, but actually what uh, at the end of the life cycle became um, uh, another product. Um, totally repurposed. And the principal takeaway from that report. Uh, was that the eight of the ten highest recycling states all have a deposit return system for beverage containers. Common, commonly known as a bottle bill. Then it went on to conclude, quote, it is not possible to reach such high recycling rates through curbside systems alone. And I noted then that the two were meant to, to work together. Um, so there, there has been um. Wide study, um, deep analysis of successful recycling. What works, what doesn't work, D C is not making this up. DC is not flying blind, DC is not working on a blank slate. There's been abundant experience with these states that have had. Deposit systems and, 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 and have implemented those in conjunction with curbside recycling. Um, so, so we know all that. Um, and I just want to point that out and Commissioner Simmons, I, I certainly understand uh, concerns about um, retailers and others. Um, and also the effects that this might have on the curbside program, so I wanted to cite that um, specifically. Um, anyway, um, might have more to say at the very end, I believe other commissioners may want back in.
We're at the end, so we're.
Wait, wait, what about, what about?
I'm gonna call you commissioner. I just, I'm just saying, we are about at the end, because uh, every commissioner except for maybe one or two has had. Um, two turns, some commissioners are going on three rounds. Um, so um, with that, Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that in the chat, uh, Susan Shore. Pointed out that uh, Vermont's population of six hundred and forty-eight thousand uh, is a bottle bill state, that's, you know. That population is comparable to DC. And it's bordered by New Hampshire, which is not a bottle bill state. And to my understa, all my understanding is that Vermont's program is rather successful, thank you.
Thank you. Um. So I'll just, um. Commissioners that haven't gone once or twice, feel free to raise your hand, but I'll just, you know, conclude with saying there's. On my end, definitely issues with the legislation, but you know, more importantly, there's things in the resolution language that I can't support, so. And I think the resolution language should be more, more broader and a little bit more specific on what we would want to see out of the council. Very concerned with um, the equity issues in seven and eight, I don't think we. Sufficiently addressed that in the resolution at all, concerned with this uh, organization, we don't know who it's going to be. Um, we have in our resolution to um, regard, well, also mention the force sense in terms of the offset of costs, but also. The offering grants and tax credits for equipment. Signage and system upgrades, I, I don't know why as an ANC we would put that in there in this um. Fiscal environment, uh, it just doesn't seem like it belongs, so. Um, again, I'm going to uh, not vote on this resolution in terms of approval. So this is last call for commissioners, we need to take the vote, we're at nine eleven. Um, we've definitely gone way over time on this, um, last call commissioners, do you have any additional commentary, especially commissioners that haven't? Had a chance to opine on this? Okay, with that. I'm gonna call for the vote and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Nagy, the secretary, if you could do. A roll call votes by S M D.
Okay, um, I think that's the first time we've done that. All right, uh, S M D oh one, how do you vote?
No.
S M D oh two, how do you vote?
Yes.
S M D oh three? Carol, how do you vote?
You're muted, Carol.
Commissioner Grunwald, you're muted.
I thought you could read my lips there, yes, I vote yes.
Good, but thank you, yeah, so that's a yes for you, okay. Uh, Commissioner Finacy, oh four, how do you vote?
Yes.
Hey. Uh, Commissioner Simmons, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Okay, and Commissioner Goslin?
No.
Okay, and that leaves me and I vote yes. So we've got four yeses, two nos, and one abstention.
Motion carries, thank you commissioners.
Thank you. And also thank you to Stephanie and Chris and Chris and Susan for being with us tonight. Your input was instrumental here in helping us understand the nuances of this. Uh, so thank you very much and thank you for all of your hard work on this over. What I understand now has been several years, so very much appreciated.
All right, commissioners, we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda, uh, which is a discussion and proposed omnibus. Uh, discussion of the proposed omnibus rear addition and alley lot subdivision and development zoning changes. This is Commissioner Grunwald and Goslin. And you guys have um, fifteen minutes for this topic, I'm gonna keep you to time.
Uh, Carol, it'd be all right if I start, just I think I've.
Sure, because you have updated, um, I think you have updated hearing dates.
Yeah, so uh, we wrote a, a, a letter, each of the commissioners signed, we were not, because of the press of time, we were not able to convene a meeting to vote on this letter. Uh, we wrote a letter on October twenty-first saying we were. Although we understood that OP had been working on this issue for some time. We had not caught wind of it uh, uh, in anything like a timely fashion, such that we could make. Provide useless feedback, we asked uh, OP and the zoning commission to delay their hearings on four different cases. Um, uh, OP came back to us hmm, yesterday or the day. Before saying they were going to delay on three of the cases, they were gonna change their hearing schedule. Um, uh, twenty-five twelve, which is the so-called omnibus text amendment, which has twenty-four different um, provisions in it. Um, uh, twenty-five uh, uh. Oh, eight, which is updating the regulations for residential apartment zones, which we have none of in our ANC. Twenty-five oh six, which uh, uh, has updates of regulations governing alley lots, of which we have twenty-seven. In our ANC and twenty-five eleven, which would have um, which would have uh, moved more. Uh, um. More issues into the right, matter of right category for putting rear additions on houses. Um, the zoning, OP said, OP and the zoning commission said, we're gonna change the dates for three, three of them, but we're gonna have a hearing. Today on the rear addition um, issue. They did, um, and um, uh, I watched, I actually went to get online. Um, to catch the end of the meeting and it was already over and um. The chair of the zoning commission and the vice chair both expressed. Deep reservations about the proposal that they had sought from OP. And um, Jennifer Steingasser is on the video saying we're gonna withdraw um, our, um, the rear additions thing altogether. For the other ones, um, there are, there is a hearing of five days in a row, five or six, um. Six days in a, uh, six days of hearings coming up very quickly on the omnibus um, uh, measure. Um, uh, starting on this Thursday, next Monday, next Wednesday, next Thursday, the following Monday and the following Thursday. And I just say that I think that uh, uh, we're gonna need to. Have a few of us bear down on each of these issues, I'll, I will. You've been provided a schedule, but I will uh, send it around again for those hearings. Uh, and then the hearings on the residential zone, the, the residential apartment zone one doesn't apply to us. Um, that's on January fifth, um, the, the alley lot one is on January twelfth. So that's, that's where we are now, we've had some effect um, uh, on, on the, on the process, um, but. Uh, in, in terms of, uh, in terms of substantive comments about the proposals, we're gonna have to do our homework.
Yep. So uh, I would like to say that um, the omnibus bill is the one that uh, we should be concerned with uh, in Chevy Chase. Um, and, and perhaps the, and also the alley lot regulations, those are really the only two that pertain to us. And uh, only a handful of the omnibus um, uh, ones pertain to Chevy Chase, so. Um, probably the, one of the most onerous ones or ones that. Residents may think would be onerous. Um, there is a, a text, a proposed text amendment to front yard setbacks. And this would allow the front yard setback cha, uh, that would, it would allow uh, front yard setback changes to be sought using a special exception. Rather than a variance. And it basically would have potential um, im- impacts on entire neighborhood blocks because it would change the. Uh, the look of our neighborhoods, um, specifically. Um, the proposed uh, omnibus amendment number fifteen would allow a building to be constructed closer to the street. Than the existing closest building on the street. Through an application for a special exception rather than the current uh, required um, application for a variance. So um, the, these changes to the front yard setback are really important. Because every building that is allowed by the B Z A to be closer to the street than allowed under the regulation. Uh, it, it effectively resets the acceptable distance to the street under the regulation. Um, so in other words, to the extent that builders are allowed to build closer to the street by the B Z A. The ability of future builders to build closer to the street is also allowed, but that would be as a matter of right. So we have the potential to really dramatically. Change the look of, of our streets in Chevy Chase. Um, if this is, uh, this goes through and this, this uh, proposed change applies in all R. Um, zones, which are residential, R is residential. Um, the next one that uh, would pertain to Chevy Chase. Would be a change in the size of uh, allowed accessory buildings. And this would be in all R zones, which is residential and all RF zones, which is row houses. And uh, OP is proposing to increase the maximum footprint permitted for an accessory building in the, in these zones. So um, currently. Um, uh, in both the R uh, and RF zones. The regulations establish a maximum building area for an accessory building of four hundred and fifty square feet. Or an area equal to thirty percent of the required rear yard area, whichever is greater. And the proposal would increase the permitted size for an accessory building. In all of the R one and R two zones. And that's, that comprises uh, a lot of, a lot of properties in Chevy Chase. Uh, from four hundred and fifty square feet to six hundred square feet. And from um. Uh, and from four hundred fifty square feet to five hundred and fifty square feet in all the R three and RF zones. So that, that's the second one that would affect Chevy Chasers. Um, a third one, which, which um, residents uh, may welcome. Is that OP is uh, this is uh, number seventeen, OP is proposing to establish a minimum side and rear setback requirement. For accessory buildings in the residential zones. Um, so uh, that would be welcome, uh, currently. Um. There is no restriction on placing an accessory building directly on a side or rear lot, lot, lot line in most zones. And uh, people have complained heavily about that uh, for reasons of uh, privacy and noise and uh, you know, uh, privacy and noise primarily. Um, and so now they are proposing to uh, oh yeah, and, and also maintenance, people, you know, if a accessory uh, ADU is built right on the property line. People, you can't mow around it, you can't, you know, can't maintain it, you can't paint the, paint the building without trespassing on your neighbor's property. So um, in the R zones, in all the uh, residential zones. OP is proposing a required setbacks of three feet from a side, side lot line and five feet from the rear lot line. Where the side or rear lot line is shared with an adjacent property. So I think that will be welcomed probably by Chevy Chase residents. And um. Those are, those are the three primary ones that I could find, um. There are other, other uh, changes that would pertain. To row house districts in Chevy Chase, uh, row house zones, but I'm not an expert on that because. I'm here uh, representing the ward four part of uh, everything. So in Peter uh, and Corinthia's uh, districts, um, and maybe, and also I think Commissioner Nagy's as well. Um, you have some other zones that uh, may have changes. Proposed changes.
I'd just say, uh, precisely because I have not. I'd just say, uh, precisely because I have not, um, to, to finish this, our presentation of this, I, I'd just say that, because I have not looked closely at this. On first glance, I do not see a concern with many of the provisions of the omnibus, but I am happy to hear from my constituents if there are concerns. Um, I do think we ought to remember, and as we consider this, that to the extent that, um, OP and the zoning commission loosen regulations somewhat, they also give, uh, property owners, uh, rights that, uh, to the use of their property that they didn't have. But in any case, I'm open-minded about this, I don't have a firm view on, on the provisions in the omnibus, and I am gonna have to bear down on it before we get to these hearing dates.
Um, so, uh.
Commissioner Grunwald? Commissioner Grunwald?
Oh.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we go to Commissioner Nagy? We have about four minutes left.
Oh, sure, I just wanted to finish the presentation, but anyway, go ahead.
You can go on if you still.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, uh, I had invited, um, Joel Lawson, uh, of OP to come to our meeting, um, he, today, but he, he couldn't come today because there was a hearing being held today, so I suggested that he please come during, uh, and we would talk about, uh, having a special meeting so that he could apprise us of all the details of the exact changes that were proposed and how they would affect Chevy Chase, and exactly where in Chevy Chase. Um, and, but I, I can't offer him, I couldn't offer him a, a date, because it wasn't clear to me that our commission wanted to have a, a special meeting, so, to discuss this with him. So, that's, uh, that's where we are with that.
Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I wanted to say that, uh, Peter and Carol and I all attended sessions with OP on these zoning changes in the omnibus bill. Uh, there are a lot of issues for, in my view, for our ANC, um, and I'm gonna be reaching out as soon as I understand them better, and it's very complicated, and there are people who understand it super well, and I've been reaching out to them for assistance, but, um, I will be reaching out to my constituents to see what their views are on this. Um, and we talk about the zoning changes sort of as if they're abstract, but they actually affect property rights, not just for the people who want to, uh, add to their properties or change their properties, or do additions, or ADU, ADUs, or whatever, but people who are actually living right next to them, and so it, it's a very thorny, thorny issue, um, that I, I think merits a lot of community engagement.
Let me go to, um, Michelle Wolin. We have about three minutes left, Michelle, if you could keep it to a minute or so.
Yeah, I, I just want to emphasize, as I said in the chat, a lot of people, including me, in our ANC live in row houses, but in addition to that, most people, now, this is not Potomac, there, there is not a lot of space between most of the houses here, they're all very close together. So, for example, allowing the front setback to be, or allowing them to go further in the front yards, especially for a front, uh, in a row house, you, instead of being able to have a view when you walk out and have light coming into your house, you'll have a wall to look at when you walk out, and it can deep, it greatly affect the amount of light coming into your house. Um, and I have heard of homes, in fact, I know, 5301 Connecticut, it had been a duplex. When they, they first only had the end unit, they damaged the house next door. The woman sued them, uh, couldn't keep it up, and eventually had to sell to them for a million dollars. And I know of other people, City Paper did a big article on this, about these pop-ups in row houses, how it has deeply hurt people who are in those adjacent houses. And it's also gonna, you know, if you allow them to go further out in their front yard, it's really gonna affect our tree canopy, a lot of trees are in front yards. Um, so, you know, I beg you not to have the approach of, oh, let's just let the homeowner do what they want, because in a city like this, it affects all the neighbors around them.
Commissioner Goslin? You're on mute, Commissioner Goslin.
Oh.
Commissioner, you're on mute.
Yeah, sorry. Um, uh, just procedurally, uh, to my fellow commissioners, I, I say, I think OP's practice is that once they're in the hearing process with, um, the zoning commission, they won't take meetings with ANC's. Um, and given, uh, so I think we're just gonna need to do some fast, I, I, I may be wrong, and I'm happy to join Carol and Liz reaching out immediately to, uh, Joel Lawson and Jennifer Steingasser, but, um, given that the first of the hearings on the om- on the, the piece of the omnibus is Thursday, um, um, I, I think, uh, I, I, well, I look to you to how, how do you wanna proceed with this? I mean, if, if I'm right about this, we're just gonna need to come up with a, you know, some smart testimony by individual commissioners. I mean, some of the stuff further out, we've got, we've probably got another meeting between now and that hearing to, to formulate a position and vote on it as a commission, but these things are, these things are coming up in very fast order. So I'd ask you how you want me to proceed on this, you want me to write a letter that, uh, I mean, I, I drafted a letter before I found out about, to, um, today, about, uh, what happened to the rear addition proposal, but, um, that's kind of moot, given it's been withdrawn, um, so.
Okay. Yeah, the rear additions don't pertain to us, they only pertain to R4 and R3 zones, I believe. I don't believe we have any of those in Chevy Chase, or at least in our ANC. Do we, Peter?
Uh, Carol, I don't know. I don't, and I don't think, but I did not think it just applied to those two, to those two zones. In, in any case, we still have this problem with the omnibus, and I just, uh, that's what, I mean, uh, wha- whatever, whatever the rear addition proposal applied to, it's mooted by the fact it's being withdrawn. So, um, but we've got these, this really fast pace of hearings coming up on, on the omnibus.
Right, and, yeah, and I, I'd like to add that, you know, uh, I think we should not have a cavalier attitude towards this, because there, you know, although these, these proposed changes seem small, and they seem scattered, um, it doesn't make them less important, um, because they are truly important to the people they affect. They are truly important to the people who, who have, uh, rezoned properties or proposed changes that affect their own property, and, and they truly affect, um, neighbors' properties as well. Um, so I think that it's really important for us to try to get, um, a zoning representative here. I mean, we have tried now, uh, I think three times, uh, to get Joel Lawson to come to one of our meetings to talk to us, and I, I think we really need to do that. If we have to do it tomorrow or Wednesday, I think that's very important. Peter, do you know which of these provisions in the omnibus is going to be discussed on Thursday? In the hearing, which hearing?
Uh, the split, the split lot.
Okay, that doesn't pertain to us, that doesn't pertain to Chevy Chase, is my understanding.
Yeah, the, the, the light pole for district recreational facilities, the green area ratio,
Uh huh.
and this is the one I just don't know, zoning administrator flexibility under subtitles A 304 and Y 702. I just don't know what that is, and then, uh, but, but, so, it sounds as if, and, um, um, I, I, I just, I, I asked the commission, should, I don't think we're gonna have much traction here, but should we ask the zoning commission, should I, should we, should I write the zoning commission and say, you need to push off the Thursday, um, hearing, I just, we, we are, these first few hearings that they've scheduled are really, um, coming up to us within a week, um, and I just, I, I don't know, um, I, I, I don't, yeah.
I'd, I'd like to add also that lest anyone think it's, um, our ANC that's really at fault here, I just wanted to tell you, uh, being so late, I would, I like to say that, uh, I've heard, uh, read about so many ANC's being in the total dark, they have not even attended one of the online workshops, they have not a clue as to what is happening, because the Office of Planning sprung this on everyone so fast, uh, and sprung these hearings on everyone, so we are not the only ones in this predicament. Um, ANC's, uh, throughout the city are struggling with this mightily, and I, I really think that we need to insist, uh, that Joel Lawson must come and talk to us so that our constituents can be aware of what, what is being proposed. And exactly where.
Let me, let me, um, offer, first of all, I thought that, per our email traffic, that there was no opposition for a special meeting. So, if, if we need to, as a commission, write a draft, you know, we can agree on it tonight, we don't need to necessarily vote on it, but we can, we don't have the language, but I, I think a special meeting is critical.
So do what?
We need to do that. Um, is there anyone on the commission that opposes a special meeting?
No, no, but can I just point out that two of the six hearings, zoning commission hearings, are less than seven days away, which has, gives us a terrible problem with our.
It gives us a bad position, but we can, um, if I'm not mistaken, we can provide a justification when we do the community notice, um, and, you know, the community has a right to say, I don't think your just- justification is justified, but I think in this case, we could, we could put the justification, which is the tight schedule of the zoning commission, that's beyond our control. But I think it's critical that we get somebody to the ANC and the community to kind of explain all this. And I agree, yeah, we can, we can always ask for them, you know, to hold off and put it back, but I think more importantly, we need to get someone here, you know, as soon as possible, um, to start divvying this out to us, we just, I think we need that. Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to mention, uh, Peter, I'm not sure what you're referring to about, um, the zoning administrator flexibility, um, and I don't know if it pertains to the same thing, but I have, um, heard, read both that there was legislation, um, making its way through the council from the mayor's office, it's not clear which way it went, whether, whether it was drafted at the council by Chairman Mendelson, or whether the mayor drafted it, but it's to increase flexibility of the zoning administrator, i.e., to bypass, um, input from, uh, the owners. So I, I'm hoping that that's not the issue that you're talking about, because that is huge. You know, getting, doing away with zoning appeals, which is basically the tenor of that legislation, is, is a huge, big issue for lots and lots of people here.
Can I suggest that I, I, I don't know how to post something in the chat, but we have a 17-page document from, um, from the, that was sent to all of us from, uh, um, um, the zoning administrator, um, that has this schedule for the hearings on the omnibus. Um, you actually have it in, I, I, I don't know how to post it in the chat, but you have it in your email in baskets. I can send it around again, and somebody can post it. But all, all, all I need to know, I think from, given I've done the communications here, is I, um, does, do we wanna pick a date for a special meeting? Do we want a letter to go to OP saying we really need somebody here? And do we wanna say something to the zoning commission that these are too, this is too tight a schedule for us? Um, uh, so, uh, I'm, I'm looking for guidance on, on.
Well, I'll, you know, defer to you and Commissioner Grunwald, but I, I think we need a letter. I don't think we can set the date for the special meeting until we get it registered, but I think tomorrow or tonight, we need to, um, get something out saying that the commission is requesting a special meeting. It, it doesn't have to be a letter, um, I mean, you know, you guys, I'll authorize you guys to send it out, but we need to get something out and get something on schedule quick. Um, and in, in interim, you know, we can also request that the hearings be delayed, but I think we, we gotta start working on the special meeting. I just don't think we can set a date until we have a commitment, because it, my fear is, we set a date, we announce the date, and then, you know, OP doesn't show up. I'd rather get the confirmed commitment from OP, and regardless of when it comes in, issue the special meeting along with the justification of why it's not within the seven days.
Yeah, I mean, I, I asked, uh, Joel Lawson, I said, if we can't have you on the 27th, we need to have you for a special meeting, and I, I believe I asked him for, you know, when, I said, we are flexible and we'll work with your schedule, but he didn't, he didn't respond to my.
Commissioner Grunwald, maybe what we should do is, um, a letter from, um, the Chair to the Director. Um, we've been really successful in getting that previously, um, maybe we need to go over Joel's head. Commissioner Sherman?
Uh, Joel did tell us that he would be available for questions from commissioners, meaning, um, a call. Um, he deferred on the, um, or demurred on the special meeting, um, not something that we can't go back on, we should, but just to know, he did say he would make himself available on a call to answer commissioner questions.
Yeah, that doesn't seem good enough to me, we need someone to sit down and explain what these changes are, you know, I mean, I, I've done my best to, you know, for the past couple of weeks, you know, studying these very carefully and picking out the ones I thought were most pertinent to Chevy Chase, but I don't wanna be responsible for, um, making mistake, I'm not a zoning expert. Um, and it seems to me that they owe us this, um, after having dropped this bomb on all of the ANC's, um, they are responsible for explaining it to us. They need to explain the zoning changes they are making, and precisely where they're going to occur, and I understand they're occurring all throughout the city, but some of them will be occurring in Chevy Chase.
I've.
Our commissioners, um, what do we need to do? Where, where are we extended overtime here?
Shall we, shall we, uh, set a date for a special meeting and, and ask him to come? Or do we have to ask him to come and base, and, and we base the date of the special meeting based on his availability? I mean, I already asked him for that.
I mean, I, I get, I stated my preference is to get his availability, but with the sidebar with him, I would send a formal request, um, to the Director. And, you know, obviously Joel is, is copied, but at this point, I would go over Joel.
I would like to also, yeah, I'd also like to point out that Joel is really the only one, he said he's the only one on the staff who's familiar with this, so he is the only one that he would, uh, agree to have come represent OP.
Right.
There's no, there's no one else.
Right, she would designate him to come, but if he's not gonna give us a clear answer, then we need to, we need to trump him, in my opinion.
Right, no, what, but what I'm trying to say is, we don't want another representative from OP, because Joel Lawson explained to me that he was really the only one who under, has a, 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 a grasp on all the details of this, and there's no one else from OP who can talk to us.
Oh, I agree, yeah. I mean, he's the one that always shows up for us, but.
Well, do you, uh.
Commissioner Goslin?
Yes, I mean, I'm happy to draft a letter, uh, perhaps we ought to get the commission, uh, agreement to authorize me to draft a letter, or authorize you to send a letter to OP tonight, um, saying that, uh, we need to have, uh, somebody knowledgeable about the details of the omnibus, um, brief us before these hearings. Now, I, I will predict to you that they will say that we're not gonna give you anybody, and then we have to decide what we're gonna do then, but for tonight, um, does that get us moving forward on this? Um, does that sound reasonable to commissioners?
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah, that sounds fine to me.
Commissioner Finacy?
You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Okay, um, we have an email, I think, back from Sarah Barden, I believe it was, when you sent her a, a letter before asking to postpone the case, and she said that, you had sent an email, but she said that the best way to request a postponement or something was to submit it to the case record. So I think whatever we do, if it's an email, also we need to submit it to the case record, as per her email.
And just so you know, in your in-baskets now is the document that Sarah Barden sent us when she sent that email, and that, at the top of it, has the schedule of the six days of hearings on the omnibus. So you can, you can see, at least in schematic portion, what the various, uh, issues are that are at least currently scheduled to be taken up by the zoning commission over the next two weeks.
Yeah, and I, I did just put it in the chat, I uploaded it to, um, to just Google Drive, I didn't get it to the one. I didn't get it to the OneDrive yet, but it's out there and I posted it at nine forty in the chat. So if you roll back, you can see the link. It's every, anybody should have access if they have the link.
Commissioner Goslin, can you put a motion on the floor?
I move that the commission authorize the chair to send a letter to OP asking for someone to brief us very soon, within the next week on, on provisions of the omnibus and to file that also with the case record with the zoning commission. Do I have a second?
Any discussion? Commissioner Grunwald's second. Any discussion, commissioners? Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. Commissioner Simmons?
Did you grant your vote?
Going once. Commissioner Simmons, how do you vote? Going third, okay. Vote passes six, zero, zero. All right, thank you, commissioners. And next item on agenda, A and C expense reimbursement process by Commissioner Nagy, fifteen minutes.
All right, it's not going to take fifteen minutes. I think I sent it out earlier today. Apologies for the lateness, but I've been working on lots of other issues, including zoning. So my thing is that we should have a process for how we spend and approve spending of taxpayer money at this A and C. So I looked around and it actually seems like the pre-authorized spending levels are, are quite low elsewhere. So I was proposing, and we can talk about this, that we say that you can spend up to fifty dollars as long as it's reasonably necessary and related to commission business without prior approval. And obviously you would want to get a couple of quick bids if you can. And then anything over that needs to be approved by vote of the commission. And happy to entertain discussion about this.
I guess my only discussion is, it, it, I would prefer to see something like a written policy and procedure.
Memorialize this in a written policy, Commissioner Corr. It's pretty short.
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, but it's an important, I mean, this is fiscal. And I would definitely like, you know, the treasurer to buy off on it. I, I just, you know, for something like this, I would like to flush it out in detail, in writing and. Build this full discussion on it. That's just my comment.
Yep, that's fine with me. I, I don't have a problem with it. I, I was, I'm hoping to keep it simple. I got nothing against putting it, this little simple thing in writing so that everyone can just see it in black and white on paper, as it were. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'll, I'll do that before our next meeting.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I told you I'd keep it short.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, commissioners, next item, commissioner announcements, and then we'll go to commission business and wrap it up. Commissioner Simmons?
I'd just like to say I went to the Friends of Bus event on Saturday. They did a really good job. Kudos to them. Lafayette, we also had our Fall Festival this past Saturday and it was really, it went really well.
Commissioner Finacy?
Yeah, and I also wanted, I just sent a, a quick thank you note. The Lafayette volunteers did a lovely job cleaning up the park. It was as if the happiness on Saturday at the festival had never happened. There was like no trace, no trash. It was, it was great. And we also have a pop-up at Lafayette Pointer Park Rec Center on Wednesday. Janice Lewis George will be there from four to six P M. So constituents who are concerned about things can come. I just spoke with their office today also about trying to get staffers to permit the rec center on weekends so we could use it for birthday parties and things like we had been promised.
Any other commissioner announcements? Commissioner Simmons?
I was gonna say I re-raised my hand, but I'll go after groups.
Commissioner Sherman?
So there were several things that I wanted to mention to the group. They're not announcements. They're issues that concern the commission that are pending, in my view, that we need to come back and address. They could be items for the next meeting, but they could also be items that we, that we resolve otherwise. You will recall that I asked the question concerning the appointment of the co-chairs of the Raze Committee. And I don't believe that we have an answer to that question. I haven't received one. We took action on October sixth to appoint the new members, and I voted for the members. Two of the new members are people that I recommended. But the bylaws indicate that chairpeople are appointed before members are appointed. So we need to settle that matter of when the current co-chairs were, were appointed. The other issue that I'm concerned about, very concerned about, is that we had the conversation about the Raze Committee members and the bylaw amendments without having in front of us the twenty twenty-one resolution of the commission concerning the establishment of the Raze Committee that has in it some very specific provisions that include one-year terms. When we were discussing bylaw amendments about term limits, this wasn't in front of us. We had no conversation. We weren't aware of it. I only discovered it serendipitously in looking back on some of these issues. So I'm, I'm concerned about our process. I'm concerned about us not having documents that are precedents in front of us when we're taking decisions. And I'm concerned that we need to take action, which I'm happy to support. I don't know that this is complicated or difficult, to regularize matters concerning the Raze Committee with respect to the appointment of, of the, of the co-chairs. And then we have sitting members who need, per the resolution of twenty twenty-one, to be renewed and have not been renewed. So there is a host of issues concerning the Raze Committee that I, I believe we have to address. It doesn't require an agenda item. I think it requires action somehow by the, by the commission. But again, I, I've asked this question as to when the current co-chairs, Corinthia and Libby Martin, were appointed by a majority vote of the commission, and I have not gotten an answer on that. So I'm bringing it up now. Finally, I want to say, and again, express my deep disappointment for the way the website issue was handled at the meeting. I've indicated to you today that I felt that I was ambushed, that it was planned. You knew this was coming. You had every opportunity to contact me and ask me about the status of the project. No one did that. And I am deeply disappointed. And as I indicated in my note today, we talk about comedy on this commission, but dragging family members into commission business when they're merely volunteering to help this commission is, I think, a disgraceful thing to do. So I wanted to put those comments on the record.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Simmons?
Oh, I just wanted to let Commissioner Finacy know that Lafayette, we actually had our entire custodial team on site. So they did the cleanup of the grounds and we also had our operations person from Lafayette. So just to thank them for all their hard work and HSA paid overtime for that.
Commissioner Nagy?
Yep, thank you. I want to echo that I also have been asking the question when the co-chairs of the Raze Committee were voted on. And I still don't have an answer. I've asked it in writing several times. I've asked it verbally. I still don't have an answer. You could answer it right now, actually, if you were so inclined. And one of the people who supposedly was confirmed is sitting right here. She could tell us when she was confirmed. So that's one point. And, and to echo Commissioner Sherman's remarks, I too felt I ambushed at the October sixth meeting. My ambush was slightly different. Libby Martin decided to excoriate me in public and the chair allowed that to continue until after Libby was done, when she finally interjected. And I have a problem with that. You want comedy? I want comedy, but I also want to be treated fairly. That's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah, in addition to solving the, the Raze Committee issue, because that will pertain to all our committees, if we ever have any more committees, I'd like to, I'd like to straighten out the problem of getting topics on the agenda and, and not having enough time to, to study the proposed final draft of the agendas before they go out. And this has been a recurring problem. For example, for the meeting that we're conducting now, for the agenda, for the, of the, for the meeting that we're sitting at right now, there were five, five requests to add an item to the agenda between two oh six P M. and seven thirty-two P M. when Lisa announced it would be distributed. There was a twenty, there was twenty-six minutes between Lisa, when, between when Lisa announced that the agenda would be posted, to, to Lisa's announcement that it would be posted, okay? And between, I'm so sorry, there was twenty-six minutes between when Lisa announced it would be posted to when it was posted. So, and then after she posted the agenda, there were four more requests to get it on the agenda by amending the agenda in light of the new information that had been discovered about the Raze Committee. And so to reiterate, there, it was pretty clear that there were three commissioners who really wanted an item on, on today's agenda. And we were not recognized. And the, the draft agenda was, was sent to us. We commented on it, but we just could not get the, the agenda items on the agenda that we were concerned about. And we didn't have enough time. We had twenty-six minutes between when the chair announced that it would be posted to when it was posted. Twenty-six minutes is not enough time to comment on a final agenda. And this has happened time and time again, and it's very frustrating for some members of this commission to not be able to get the items that we care about onto the agenda. Thank you. So I, I think we need to have a, some kind of administrative meeting to work out these issues. Thank you.
So what I'm gonna do is, that was a lot of information and unfortunately, not the full detail. But what I am going to do is I am going to invite Office of A and C to have a meeting with this commission to explain some of these procedures. The commission did vote on the co-chairs. I believe that was April twenty-fourth of twenty-three. I have to check my notes. And as I told the commission, I am going to do a letter to the commission with those details. And I am going to do that. And, but I do think that the Office of A and C needs intervention with this commission.
Can we discuss the Office of Advisory?
Commissioner Sherman, you're not recognized and we are, we're gonna move on.
You can't just unilaterally invite the O A and C to intervene in our commission. The chair has no greater rights on this commission than any other commissioner.
Commissioner Nagy?
I am, because you're doing something unbelievably. Don't expect to find everybody at that meeting, Lisa.
You don't have to attend. It's not mandatory. You don't have to attend.
Commissioner Corr, you have two statutory responsibilities to convene.
Commissioner Sherman, you are interrupting. You haven't been recognized.
You, you're not gonna.
Isn't it nice to be able to control the dialogue like this?
Commissioners, I'm gonna call the meeting adjourned if you continue to interrupt. I'm not gonna end this meeting like this. We're not gonna have a.
You should be listening to us.
You're not gonna devolve into shenanigans.
These are real concerns of your, of the commission.
To interrupt and not abide by the rules of the meeting and procedures of the meeting, I'm going to call the meeting adjourned.
We can't get items on the agenda and we're not allowed to speak.
Well, Commissioner, again.
The chair not to allow.
The rules are one minute per speaker.
I am appealing the judgment of the chair and I'm gonna do it three times and then we're gonna vote on it. Point of order, point of order, point of order.
Commissioner Nagy, you are not.
This is a wonderful, I need a second.
You don't have a proper motion when you're not recognized. You can.
Well, that's, you know what? It's really wonderful to be able to control the dialogue this way.
Let me, let me say this. Community members. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.